Okay, we're live.
Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
We acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the traditional land of the Anurshnabeg people. The Anurshnabeg include the Odawa, Ojibwe, and Barowatomi nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. Good evening and welcome to Berry City Council, everyone. As always, these days, like to remind everybody that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, City Council is continuing to practice physical distancing with members of council, the executive management team, and the city clerk participating via video conference. Members of the senior leadership team that have items on tonight's agenda are not visible but are available to answer any questions we might have tonight. Okay, the first item on council's business tonight is confirmation of the minutes. The confirmation of the minutes of the City Council meeting held on February 8th, 2021 have been circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, minutes are adopted as printed and circulated. This evening, there is one presentation listed under awards and recognition, and this one is a real pleasure. We have not done very many awards and recognition items during the pandemic because we can't have people in the chambers and do this in person. But we're able to do this tonight on his first day of retirement, and that would be to recognize Peter Sundborg, the Executive Director outgoing or recently departed Executive Director of the Berry Food Bank. Mr. Sundborg is here tonight, and if we can just get his camera and microphone on, we'll be able to see him. There he is. Peter, welcome to Berry City Council, and for everybody watching who may not yet have had the pleasure of meeting this man, he has made an absolutely remarkable impact on our community over his 10 years at the helm of the Berry Food Bank. He will be retiring this week, having started his career at the Berry Food Bank in 2011. And at that time, among his many accomplishments, at that time in 2011, the Food Bank was regularly raising about half a million pounds, 500,000 pounds of food annually. That, excuse me, that was indicative of a generous community and a strong organization. But now, food donations have increased to over a million pounds of food a year. And that is in no small part due to Peter's relentless advocacy on behalf of not only the organization, but the belief that nobody in our city need go hungry. For those who know the Food Bank as well, I could talk about over the years, the way Peter has expanded the number of people that the Food Bank's been able to serve. Several years ago, there was a sudden and fairly sharp increase in the number of people using the Food Bank, and it required the organization to change the way they were doing many things, go to the community. And I believe the community responded, but only because Peter and his team were able to explain how important it was and to react to that increased demand in a remarkable way. The other thing I want to mention is, excuse me, the breadth of food that the Food Bank's now offering. And that's something that I know Peter has worked on tirelessly over the 10 years that he's been there. Many of us who, you know, may have known a food bank when we were growing up, probably think of it as cans and bags of pasta and things like that. It is so much more today. And during the course of the pandemic, of course, there were partnerships with organizations like Horsepower to deliver frozen meals, pre-prepared meals, with the pivot that was needed in terms of the way that people access the Food Bank. There also began to be expanded deliveries and a recognition that some people either would not be able to get out or could not safely get out. And all of these changes, Peter steered the organization through. But I guess the last thing I wanted to say is, Peter, I know very, very few people as warm, generous, and thoughtful as you. And in that, you are an example to everybody who tries to support more marginalized populations and the people in our community who need help. But to be frank, you've been an inspiration to me and I know to many others in the community because of your relentless and very fine commitment to the people that needed the service of the Food Bank. So, you know, I could kind of go on and on about the different times that we got together. I remember a shipment of turkeys arriving from southwestern Ontario, an entire truck full of turkeys. And at some point, I remember there was, I think, a picture of us saying thank you for that donation by holding a whole bunch of frozen turkeys. But time and again, as I come into the Food Bank and worked with you and worked with your team, your impact was obvious. So, we could not let this day, your first day of retirement, pass without inviting you to Berry City Council. I do have a couple of things that I wanted to give you. But I did want to say on behalf of council, thank you for 10 years of service to our community. As you sort of reflect on these 10 years and your accomplishments, I think I'm speaking for everybody when I wish you the very best for a very well-earned retirement. So, council, in the way that we can right now, would you all join with me in thanking for his 10 years of remarkable service, Peter Sundborg?
Well, thank you very much.
Peter, I have a few things for you, and then I'll turn the floor over to you. First of all, because we do certificates, we have a certificate for you, but a certificate hardly seems like enough. But we did want to do that in recognition of your service. We have made a donation to the Berry Food Bank in your name, which we thought was an appropriate thing to do at this time. And as a gift, I wanted to give you this. So, this is Beautiful Berry. It's a book you may be familiar with. Hopefully, you don't have yet. But it's probably the best history of our city in many ways. It's been written. Beautiful Berry, The City and Its People, An Illustrated History of Berry by Sue Murdoch, Brad Radachuk, and Gerchik. And this, I think, because it's the city and its people, and it's those people that you've served so admirably, this seemed like an appropriate gift. So, I don't know, maybe I'll get Amazon to deliver that to your front porch or something. But thank you again so much, Peter, for your service to Berry, and I'd like to invite you to say a few words if you'd like.
Well, thank you for recognizing me for the work that has gone on in the past 10 years. Certainly, I'm flattered and I'm very honored that City Council and yourself, Mayor Lehman, would take the time to honor me in this way. It's interesting. I was saying to my wife today that I did this because this is just what I do. It's, I'm no different in any other way other than to say that, you know, I wanted to ensure that nobody in our community went hungry and that, you know, we could treat everybody with respect and with dignity and not judge people as they walk through the door. And for me, this was never really a job. It was, every day was so exciting and just part of being an extension of what I've always wanted to do in my life. And I think I've shared with many of you in the past, my passion in life and my purpose that I wrote down many, many years ago was simply to serve other people. And what a great opportunity I had to do that with the Berry Food Bank. And to serve other people every day, whether there were clients coming through the doors, whether it was a donor, whether it was a volunteer or one of our staff members, it was just great to serve people and to somehow make a difference in the lives of those clients in particular that were coming through the door. You know, Jeff, you alluded to, you know, the changes that took place in the Food Bank. And I remember driving through Bradford and going into one of the production places there that has hundreds of thousands of carrots and saying, you know, would you ever consider donating to the Food Bank? And Dominion Produce said, well, how many would you like? And so, they started delivering crates of seconds carrots to the Food Bank. And they were just, some of them were just massive in size, and some family, we would just give one carrot. But it was, but it was just so amazing how the community, Simcoe, the community of Simcoe County, and certainly the community of Berry wrapped around the Berry Food Bank to help all of us to feed people. And, you know, when we ran into this pandemic, we just weren't sure what was going to happen. And the number of years that we put forth and the effort that we put forth, the eight years before, paid off in the pandemic when we asked the community not to make food donations, but to make financial donations. And I'll share with all of you that in the month of April, we raised an entire year's revenue in one month from the community. And I'm always proud to say, yeah, exactly. Counselor McCain, you're right on. It was just so overwhelming for me to see the amount of funds coming in that we could then turn around and go to Joe's No Frills and Chris's No Frills and support those local businesses. But in the end, what it is, is that it was an honor for me to serve, and it was an honor to meet so many amazing people and realize that if there was ever a place you wanted to be an Executive Director of a Food Bank, it's Berry. Because that's one of the most generous communities that I've ever been involved with. And I share that because I talked to my colleagues in other communities who struggle to get donation and who struggle to have a relationship with the mayor and City Council and MPs and MPPs. And I know that I'm, I could pick up the phone and call Mayor Lehman and ask for help and stuff. So, don't want to drag on, but I do want to just say thank you. Thank you for taking time tonight to honor me, and thank you for allowing me to serve as the Executive Director of the Berry Food Bank. It's been a true pleasure.
Well, Peter, as, again, I know I'm speaking for all of us, it is hard to imagine the Food Bank without you. But we know the Food Bank is immeasurably stronger, and your legacy will be the strength of that organization, the strength of that connection that you just talked about between the community and the Food Bank. And that will continue to benefit people who need help in our community for years and years to come. That's one of the truly wonderful things about a legacy like yours with the strength of an organization like this is it is stronger and able to help more people for many more years going forward. So, again, sir, thank you for all you've done for our community, and we wish you the very, very best in the well.
Well, I worked with, I worked with our new Executive Director today, Sharon Palmer. I'll be working with her for the next few weeks, so I will be at the Food Bank for the next few weeks, but thank you again for everything.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sundborg. Okay, members of council, it was a delight to start our meeting that way. We will now move on with our agenda tonight. And the first business item is deputations on committee reports. We have one deputation request and one emergency deputation request related to motion 21G040 regarding I Love Berry signage, and two deputation requests and one emergency deputation request related to motion 21G041 concerning an amendment to business licensing bylaw regarding sale of animals. The emergency deputation requests are from Aurelia Steck concerning motion 21G040, I Love Berry signage, and Dawn of Power on behalf of PAWS for Ontario concerning motion 21G041, amendment to business licensing. As those deputation requests were received after the printing of the agenda, a vote in favor by the majority of council is required in order for the emergency deputation to proceed. Counselor Harvey?
Thank your worship. I just have the request that the emergency deputations be heard first. As in my opinion, it gives them a potentially unfair advantage against other deputants, no different than at council, where yourself as the mayor get the last word when we talk about items.
Okay, that would be a change to our procedure. So, as with these sorts of things, I'll put them, I'll put that matter to a vote. I guess we'll decide first whether we hear those deputation requests. So, first I'll call the vote, and then we can discuss the change to procedure. Those in favor of hearing the emergency deputations? Okay. None are opposed, so we will hear them. On the matter of changing the order, does anybody wish to comment? Counselor Morales?
Could you just clarify the Counselor Harvey's point? The, he believes that the emergency ones should go first, so then the ones that went by the deadline get to be heard last, and that way they're the last on our mind. I'm just following the logic.
I think that's a question to you, Counselor Harvey.
Thank your worship. Actually, it's not so much to have the last word. It's more of, it does give a deputant an advantage in certain circumstances because they get to hear the earlier deputants and some of the points that they make and can adjust their deputation accordingly. And that's why I think that it's prudent upon us to allow the ones that did file on time and appropriately to have that last word, so that way they're not disadvantaged by the ones that potentially could strategically file late, knowing that they will have the last word.
Okay, I appreciate the feedback. Yeah, I still have a microphone. Mayor Lehman, could we do a one-off? I don't know. I don't know if it's, this is a clear question or a you question. Can we vote on Counselor Harvey's request as it applies to this meeting and not as a governing bylaw change? Just because I see that positive, I can also think of counter to that. I'm not dismissing that one. I'll be voting in favor of his request at this time, but I just think maybe on a situation basis and not to get into the weeds of an overall policy if we do a one-off now and then maybe look into it later with the applications. But, so that's a question to you. Oh, yeah, microphone. Okay.
Sorry, folks. Are you able to hear me?
Much better.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Yes, this would just be for tonight, Counselor Morales.
Okay.
And just bear with me a moment, folks. Had to change earphones here. Okay, does anyone else wish to speak to the request to change the order of the deputations tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question on that. Those in favor of changing the order? Okay, opposed? One, okay, that carries. So, we will do the emergency deputations first, followed by the ones that registered by the deadline. And we will first deal with the deputations on the first motion, which is 21G040 concerning I Love Berry signage. And therefore, Ms. Aurelia Steck will go first. Ryan, if we can admit Miss Steck to the meeting?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome to Berry City Council, and in accordance with our procedural bylaw, note that you have a maximum of five minutes for your deputation. Welcome to council. The floor is yours.
Wonderful, thank you. Honorable Mayor Lehman, distinguished counselors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Aurelia Steck. I am a visual artist and educator with Simcoe County. I have instructed visual art through the McLaren Art Center and actively show my work in public exhibitions. There has been some criticism suggesting that the I Love Berry sign is nothing more than a tool for self-promotion or is being used as a measure of distraction. These claims are not reflective of the larger public sentiment. A handful of naysayers does not diminish the voice of citizens who by way of voting elected a counselor specifically for his keen business sense and an ambitious vision for the city. In terms of publicity, the proposed sign announces Berry on a world stage, aligning us with other world-class cities who have embraced this adage. To suggest that Counselor McCann is acting on his own or without the support of his constituents is absurd. The sign is an example of the platform he mounted and for which he was elected. The sign is not self-serving, rather it speaks to a larger initiative for a burgeoning community. Like-minded citizens view this as a passion project and applaud this effort towards inclusion and civic pride. This brings us to the question of whether the sign is art. Some members of the community will have you believe that it is their prerogative to curate works of art based on their expertise and superior notions of design, which is to say they have dismissed the sign because it does not fit their criteria for art. Whether they believe it to be unoriginal or inferior, they are telling us it does not belong in Meridian Place. We know that location is key to delivering content and to reaching an audience. Meridian Place is not a gallery. It is not reserved for works that are deemed high or worthy by a small group of art makers and critics. Rather, it is a public space that should reflect the character of the larger community. This does not mean that art should be excluded, but that the approach should be inclusive rather than exclusive. High art can coexist with lower forms of art that reflect the everyday concerns and aesthetics of everyday people. I Love Berry is being touted as pedestrian, unoriginal, or simple. I argue that for these very reasons, it belongs in Meridian Place. It is a piece that speaks to the public honestly and authentically. Elitist notions of art do not serve the public and are no more important to culture than the familiar images that make up a common visual vocabulary. Some people would have you believe that one form of art is worthy of being elevated in the public eye. While the other is not, I believe that art as beauty resides in the eye of the beholder. Because a work is familiar does not mean it is less worthy. The sign may not be embraced by self-appointed art experts and tastemakers, but it is being embraced by people who understand the message and can celebrate the whimsy and playful spirit. From where I stand, however, this is not a matter of art at all, but a matter of marketing that draws on a simple recipe to promote our city. It is a proven campaign that is met with enthusiasm around the world. Rather than a concern for public art, let's recognize the potential to endorse our city and the many people and attractions that make it great. Some say the money could be better spent. Some are clamoring for a piece of the $200,000 to fund their own endeavors or argue the funds be put towards projects they consider worthy. First, it is presumptuous for anyone to believe they should be entitled to privately raised funds. Second, if anyone wants to pursue a worthy project, they are encouraged to raise the funds. As a practicing artist, I have the utmost respect for the efforts and struggles of fellow artists. But I recognize these funds have been labored and assigned to a very particular project. Art is crucial to culture, and to that end, the city of Berry generously sponsors programs to promote our local art community. This does not entitle us to hijack other initiatives and demand more. The timing is at issue, given the pandemic, opioid crisis, affordable housing, and current state of the economy. However, it is important to look past the devastation towards rebuilding our business and community. The sign points us to a better tomorrow. We cannot dwell on the current problems to the exclusion of celebrating the human spirit because it is this spirit that makes us open to tackling these problems. Celebration is integral to the human experience, and affirmation of love for one's community is vital. The sign is at once a statement and a call to arms. Love is a banner we should all raise. It serves as a manifestation of pride and commitment to our community. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Miss Steck. Any questions of the deputant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your deputation. I will now call Victoria Butler for the second deputation on the same matter. Ms. Butler, welcome to Berry City Council, and in accordance with our procedural bylaw, you have a maximum of five minutes for your deputation. The floor is yours.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to talk to, to talk, to speak to, I believe you should not approve motion 21G040, aka the I Love Berry signage, or at least defer it for more discussion. First, I'd like to say I'm a little confused to see other deputations on the agenda tonight on any other topics. And yet, for some reason, mine was the only one that received an entire article dedicated to my opposition using my image before I'd even shared what I had to say. If you want to encourage the public to engage in the democratic process, attempting to shame them before they even raise their voice is not the way to do it. But thanks for letting me know it was time to update my poet laureate photo on the city's website. Now, about the sign. If you are brave enough to take a look at the comment section on any Berry media page, specifically ones regarding this proposed signage, you will find that I am not alone in my opposition. In fact, it is an overwhelming, loud majority who are deeply against this. For a project that claims to be one that will unify our city, the community in question that is supposedly lacking unity has not been consulted on whether or not the sign is something we want. It feels like a thoughtless, expensive gift from some distant relative, one that we must begrudgingly thank them for but have no desire or need for such a thing. The price tag and energy of a gift do not equate meaning. I've seen some arguments that claim we cannot refuse a donation if it's being fundraised. But to my previous point, this is not actually a pricey Christmas gift from your great aunt. This is a proposal for a massive piece of infrastructure for the public sphere that we are not obligated to endorse. I do understand the appeal of attempting to create a landmark sign similar to those in other cities. However, the Toronto and Ottawa signs are popular because they have been strategically placed in spaces that are already massive tourist attractions, such as Nathan Phillips Square and Byward Market. There was already enough foot traffic and tourist appeal from these spaces on their own that it made sense to put a sign there for advertising purposes. But you can't simply plonk a sign down somewhere and expect it to become a tourist attraction. Berry is not a big city like Toronto and Ottawa. But there is so much artistic talent that is unique to us that we could tap into to create a myriad of engaging, brilliant pieces that would put money directly into local artists and community groups' pockets rather than investing such a colossal amount of money into a stagnant, admittedly unoriginal idea. The idea of uniting the city keeps being thrown around, which proves to me that those behind this proposed signage are oblivious to the city outside their own agendas. Our city is united. A community comes together in times of need. The reason I chose to stay in my hometown instead of leaving like most other people my age is because this place is full of kindness, care, compassion, and a feeling of closeness that makes me fiercely loyal to its people. After all, our motto is the people are the city. And yet, these people have been left out of this discussion. Everyone seems to have this grandiose idea about how to fix the downtown. All of these ideologies come from people outside of our downtown community who see our little neighborhood as a blank canvas for their own motives, whether that be condo developments, refusal to implement healthcare services that we desperately need, or introducing expensive signage that will generate zero revenue for the people who are the lifeblood of the downtown. As artist Katie Green so eloquently put, "Loving Berry means you also, you must also love the parts of it that are difficult to look at." What lasting benefit would the parts of Berry that are hurting receive from a sign that only claims to love us but proves time and time again through policy and direct action that love is only symbolic, is only an excuse for photo ops and tax write-offs, not genuine action of any kind? We are not a passion project, a campaign tactic, or a scapegoat to salvage an image. We are hardworking people trying to survive in a place that we adore. But those in positions of power keep making the survival more and more difficult. To hear that there are people willing to donate upwards of $50,000 to a project in the middle of a pandemic when so many of us are struggling to even pay our rent, all under the guise of supporting our community is such a slap in the face. Even the language surrounding the sign proves it has nothing to do with us, as the question as the question of ownership and proclamation of love continually falls to the proponent of this idea, rather than as a collective movement. We are not interested in an egotistical monument. We are interested in leadership that listens to us.
Point of order, Mary Lehman.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking. I'm speaking.
Sorry, Ms. Butler, hang on a second. Your point of order, councillor McCann, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. Enough of the personal passion, please. Talk about the sign itself, not the, the person that's bringing this force.
Ms. Butler, you are also at your five minutes. So I'll just encourage you to wrap up with any more concluding remarks about the sign.
Yeah, I'm done. I'm almost done. We are interested in leadership that listens to us, that genuinely cares about us, that sees Barry in all of its glory and all of its faults and loves us anyways, that wants to implement change to truly create a city that people will come from all over to discover and witness firsthand the resilient, kind, compassionate, steadfast, and tough-as-nails people we are. We are united in our truth. Please stop acting like we are not, simply because we have had enough of being pushed around and told that is best for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Butler. Questions of the deputant? Councillor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. Yeah, my quick question to the deputant is just a clarification on the first paragraph of your deputation. Were you implying that City Council posted a media picture of you and that that was not okay? Because obviously, we have nothing to do with what Barry today posts. I just, I was confused as to why that was brought into the deposition.
Ms. Butler?
Yeah, I just think it was a little bit confusing to me because the entire article had to do with one side of an argument from councillor McCann's perspective, whereas, but my image was used in the piece, so. For, and it was framed in a way that was directly referring to my deputation. I just, I've never really personally seen an article or anything like that in regards to a deputant's opposition prior to them actually speaking. I know it wasn't council, per se, obviously, because you're not Barry today. It just makes me very uncomfortable, the idea that people who would be willing to speak up in the community might feel like they might not want to, because there could be an article using their image about their deputation. That could make people a little bit uncomfortable and therefore not interested in speaking. So that was why I felt like I wanted to speak to it tonight.
Councillor Harris?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify again that we have absolutely no say in what Barry today publishes. And I would kind of like that removed from your deputation, actually, because you're inferring that we had some role in sharing that you were going to give a deputation, when obviously that isn't our, our position, and we're only here to listen and to, just for the public that's listening, we have nothing to do with what's posted in Barry today and that we didn't choose the photo that they chose to, and that you need to get updated, I guess, on your Facebook page. We have nothing to do with that. So, but thanks for the rest of your deputation.
Okay, any other questions for the deputant? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Butler, thank you for your deputation. We will now move on to deputations regarding motion 21G041 concerning the amendment to the Business Licensing Bylaw regarding the sale of animals. Again, we will proceed with the emergency deputation first, per the vote earlier, and that is Donna Power on behalf of PAWS for Ontario. Ms. Power, welcome to Barry City Council, and in accordance with our procedural bylaw, you have up to five minutes for your deputation. Ms. Power, can you hear us?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I just unmuted. Sorry about that.
All right, we can hear you. Go ahead. Welcome to.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I just wanted to open up by thanking you for the opportunity to address council, and I appreciate the opportunity very much. Again, my name is Donna Power, and I'm part of the advocacy group PAWS for Ontario. We've been in action since 2014, and we have over 8,000 members here in Ontario. And our work is to defend and improve the lives of domestic animals through bylaw and legislative change. A main area of focus for our group is ensuring that domestic pets that are sold in pet shops are sourced from humane societies, animal shelters, and community rescue groups, and not coming from unethical and inhumane breeding operations. Something that is very important to note, this proposal is not anti-business at all. We are not trying to stop or impede pet stores from selling puppies, and certainly not from being successful. In fact, our position in this is very pro-business, because in our experience dealing with other municipalities, stores that have, stores have happier customers, and they have an enhanced reputation within their community. As well, stores who have made this transition have experienced increased foot traffic in their stores because of the initiatives that the Humane Society, the rescues, and the shelters put on inside their stores. The, the communities really sense to like this, they like the, when they bring in kittens to do adoptions, it really increases the foot traffic, and roughly around 70 to 85% increased foot traffic on the days of, of the, these presentations by the groups, and they usually do them every weekend. So what we're asking for this evening, we're asking that the pet stores just take the necessary steps to ensure that they are selling healthy, ethically-bred animals to their clients, who are your constituents after all, and it's the, the sales relationship is a transparent one, and it's, there's nothing held back. The, the consumer knows exactly what they're buying, and, and it's just very transparent. Typically, this business model of a pet store sells puppies from local suppliers. And these breeding operations can be quite small, and they can be very large. And in Ontario alone, we estimate, and other groups estimate, there's roughly 400 to 500 commercial breeding operations in this province. And these puppies are sold via ads on Kijiji. They are sold on third-party websites, and where they have a virtual storefront, and they are sold to pet stores. The people who purchase these animals have no opportunity to conduct what the generally accepted steps are when you're adopting a dog, meaning you cannot meet the parents of the dog. You cannot see the conditions in which the dog lived in, was bred in, was whelped in. And you cannot speak to the actual breeder, and the actual breeder is not identified to you. It's simply, we use local reputable breeders. That's usually what is said. And at this point, I think it's really clear to state what an ethical breeder is and how their op, business operates. Breeders register their business with the Canadian Kennel Society, or sorry, CKC, the Canadian Kennel Club. An ethical breeder loves the breed. They normally breed only one type of dog, and they only have usually one litter per year. They normally do genetic testing to ensure that there's no deformities or diseases in the bloodline. Any prospective adopter would come to their home, and the adopter is actually interviewed to see if that home is suitable for their dog. The adopter would meet the parents, they'd look around, they'd see how the puppies are raised. Unfortunately, and, and we know this, and the Canadian Club acknowledges this, the list of breeders is not vetted or monitored. There's no level of oversight on this list. So it has been found that many unethical breeders and sellers are taking advantage of this loophole, and they're signing up with the CKC because they know that to the buying consumer, this adds a badge of legitimacy when they're selling a puppy. When you're buying a puppy and you see that CKC badge, it, it gives them a sense of legitimacy, like these must be legitimate breeders. And this is really something important to note. When you join the CKC, they all sign the exact same agreement to adhere by standards of practice. Practices, within those practices, they are forbidden. They, they cannot sell their puppies to pet stores, and they all acknowledge that, and they cannot do it. And they will be removed from the club if they're found to sell any of their puppies to pet stores. To date, with the work that our group is doing, 17 Ontario municipalities have updated their bylaws to state that dogs, cats, and rabbits, and that's what we say when we say domestic pets, are to be sourced only from humane societies, animal shelters, and community rescue groups. This initiative will protect pet purchasers from both a consumer and a heal, health risk. Consumers who unknowingly purchase an animal that is sick or has genetic issues, such as, let's say, elbow dysplasia, that the puppy would show no signs of at the time of purchase, they can expect to spend between $3,000 and $8,000, whether, depending on the surgery and the therapeutics. As well, a significant number of animals bred in an unethical manner are sick, and they carry diseases. And the, some of these diseases are transmittable to humans. Certain bacterias, viruses, parasites, and fungi, they are transmittable to humans, along with, of course, rabies.
Ms. Power, I've let you run a little bit over, so I'm just gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I can just ask you to wrap up. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I, that's my last sentence. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity. So I thank you so much, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Power. Are there questions for the deputant members of council? Okay, not seeing any. I'll thank you very, oh, sorry, councillor Harvey, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just one quick question, your worship. Just curious, I, obviously, it sounds like your group's been around for, for a number of years. And you say that you've had some interaction with other municipalities. Why, why is it only now that you're knocking on Barry's door?
Well, we're, we're not, it's not that it's just now. We're kind of doing it in, in a manner where, you know, there's only a group of us, and there's five of us that do this work approaching municipalities. So since in the last two and a half years, we've done 17 municipalities. So it's not that, and not only that, but it's also the volume. Barry doesn't have a lot of pet stores. So it's where some cities have maybe four, five, six pet stores. So it's, it's a bigger initiative. So it's certainly not that Barry is down on the list. It's simply, it, it's the, how we, how we got to them.
If I can just do one follow-up question about your worship. You mentioned that Barry doesn't have a lot of pet stores. How many pet stores would fall, fall within the confines of what your group is trying to enact with a bylaw?
Well, all of them would be under the bylaw, but from my understanding, only one store it would affect.
Okay. I'm gonna leave my questions at that, your worship, and I'll save my comments for later. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, councillor Harvey. Any other questions of the deputant? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Power, thank you for being at Barry City Council tonight. Next is Lindsay Fitzgerald on behalf of Dugan's Pet Center. Ms. Fitzgerald, I'll just get you into the call here. There we go. Oh, there she is. Okay. Ms. Fitzgerald, welcome to Barry City Council. In accordance with our procedural bylaw, you have up to five minutes for your deputation. Go ahead. There we go.
Better? Okay. Um, May and Council, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I've owned Dugan's Pet Center since 2006. After managing the business, I decided to purchase it because I wanted to make changes. Since then, I've worked very hard to operate my business in a way that I can be proud of. I buy from local breeders, most of whom are licensed kennels. These breeders operate under the rules and regulations of their municipalities and are subject to regular inspections. I have my own set of standards that I require of my breeders, and I've built long-term relationships, relationships with them. We work together to make sure puppies are healthy, with good temperament, and that parent's well taken care of. I understand that not every pet store lives up to my standards. There are good and bad, just like many industries. Changing the bylaw in Barry to allow pet stores to sell from licensed breeders, as well as registered rescues, gives the city control over where these dogs are coming from. I understand council's point that changing the bylaw is the only thing that can be controlled, but it doesn't address the real concern of online sale of dogs. Rescuing isn't the right choice for everyone. By only allowing the purchase of rescue box, people are forced to go online to look for a dog. These sales are not regulated. Many people have fallen victim to online scams, and it's near impossible to hold someone accountable for the problems with online underground sale of animals. Pet stores are in the public eye, which means we must be accountable for our actions. If there's a problem, we can't disappear. There are ways we can work together to create a better system through working with licensed breeders, registered rescues, and educating the public. We can change the practices of pet stores instead of banning the sale of puppies altogether. There's been talk about supporting small business with the COVID pandemic. Our small businesses in Barry have been working very hard to follow rules and regulations to keep people safe. I've done the same, but I've always done this when it comes to the, the animals that are now part of the families in our community. Mine is the only business in our community that this change will affect. I am concerned about how this will affect my business in the long term. We don't know the effect of this pandemic for years to come, and having another challenge presented is worrisome right now. I have no problem with changes to a bylaw that are reasonable, but isolate rescues as the only source for a dog is not reasonable. There are very few mom-and-pop stores left, and small businesses dying. Even though the actual sale of puppies is not my main revenue stream, the families that we send puppies home with become long-term customers. We support them through training and picking a puppy and adding a new family member, and then they support us for years to come. Making changes that negatively affect my store is not aligned with the mayor's agenda to support this. You know, some of you may already have your mind made up about the subject. No matter what I say, I won't change your, your mind. I know that you have an opportunity to make a positive change, even if it's not the same change that what other municipalities have done. I would ask that if staff investigate the need to change the bylaw, that they consult me at their convenience. This will be a win for us who do make an effort to do the right thing. Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fitzgerald, excuse me, for your deputation, and we were able to hear all that. I know it probably, you did have a few connectivity issues there, but your, your remarks were never interrupted, although they slowed down briefly. So just so you know, we did hear all of that. Are there any questions from members of council for the deputant? Councillor Natalie Harris?
Thank you, Mary Lehman. I just wanted to make sure that our deputant is aware that the motion does not exclude only to rescues right now. There, it is breeders as well. I don't know, maybe she wasn't aware that it isn't, it doesn't just define that only rescues can be sold?
Yeah, right now, I'm aware that we've, we've added in and that the change was made last week to amend the bylaw change to licensed breeders. If this was the case, I don't have a problem. I do, I did have a feeling that there was going to be some more amendments to this policy, to the bylaw. And so I'm kind of heading that off at the punch, I guess. Again, I don't have a problem with licensed breeders. I don't have a problem with having rules, regulations. I'm in favor of that. I just feel like having the only choice of being rescues is not, is not something that everyone wants to deal with.
Sure, Mary Lehman. Yes, I, I, I agree, absolutely. I'm a rescue owner and also a breeder owner, so definitely have been, I love both. And I just wanted to make sure that you know that it's been changed, just, just to make sure you're clear about.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, councillor Harris. Are there any other questions for the deputant? Councillor McCann?
Mary Lehman, you know, councillor Harris, actually, the other Harris actually had his hand up first.
Sure, councillor Jim Harris?
I'm more keen to be the other Harris tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald, but you know, the five-minute time limit is, is there for reason, and, and thank you for sticking to it. But I just, you made a comment, and I can't imagine this audience and this council is not filled with animal lovers who'd be curious to know maybe a bit more. You talked a bit about the solution that the pet store, a reputable, professionally-caring-owned press store, could play in the solution, which we all would hope were invested in the solution of animals being secured and safely and properly. Could you give me a little bit more detail on the role you think a pet store could play in making sure? Because I, I agree with you, and I'm, this, this information is new to me, and the subject is as well. But I understand that the real major problems that we have is the online sales, and, and just where do you begin to regulate that? But it sounds like you have some ideas about how you, how pet stores could be a solution to this problem. If you could give me a little bit more explanation, that I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I understand that the norm now is not to sell dogs in pet stores. It's.
Well, I understand that the norm now is not to sell dogs in pet stores. It's it's become taboo, and that's because of things that have happened years and years ago that still happen, I'm sure, in some places. You know, Ms. Powers was talking about having so many different places that breed puppies and that they're good and bad, and there are certainly some some bad ones. I think education is the first thing. You know, people call my store and ask about puppies and are looking for certain things, and I only have certain breeds because I will only deal with certain breeders. So if they're looking for advice on how to find a puppy, I try and give it to them. So I think education is the first thing. You know, I've had, especially during the pandemic, so many people call me and have they've lost hundreds up to thousands of dollars trying to buy a puppy because they're desperate for an animal to come into their home. So, you know, making sure it's the right puppy, I've turned people away because it's not the right breed for them. You know, education is the first thing, I think. But when it comes to legislation, there are not all the laws in with pet store, or sorry, with breeders are good laws, they're not enough. That's why I say I have my own standards as well, because there are minimum standards, and every municipality has different rules for kennels. So starting with the rules for kennels would be the best place to start, because that's the main place where these puppies are bred. So, you know, giving the law a way to shut down these places is the best way to start, not not from, you know, the end game, because people are meeting breeders in parking lots, because, you know, they're not educated on the right way to do things. And so, you know, that that's not a way to pick a puppy. I understand too, you know, the talk about interviewing, and we do that. And we our breeders deal with us because they don't want to deal with the public through bad experience or time restrictions. There's several reasons. So, you know, we do that as well. There's also ways to license pet stores. You know, Pajak has different ways that they they that's the pet industry of Canada. So different ways that they give licensing and things like that. So, you know, why not have a pet store have to pass rules or pass courses, or, you know, there's a whole bunch of different ways that we can educate ourselves and our customers.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate the response.
Sure, thank you.
Counsel McCann.
I think, Mary Lehman, I have a couple of questions. First of all, Ms. Fitzgerald, have you had any complaints directly towards your business since you've owned it and managed it?
Well, that's kind of an open, definitely. I mean, there's never not complaints. Sure, I mean, I think I used to breed dogs myself. I used to breed American Bulldogs. So, I mean, when you're breeding animals, no matter what you do, there's always can be problems, just like having babies, human babies. So nothing's ever a hundred percent. I think what it comes down to is how you deal with those problems. So, you know, if there is a problem, we are there, we have guarantees for a reason. You know, we work with our breeders if there's a problem, and they're a hundred percent behind the puppies that sell to me. So that's important as well. So.
Ms. Fitzgerald, I really, I really do appreciate that answer, and I really do appreciate your honesty, and I'll be following up with with staff members when this comes to later on tonight. But may I have a few more questions maybe for you, Mrs. Fitzgerald? I'm just curious if if we do pass this bylaw, you know, you're an expert when it comes to the sale of pets. And I'm concerned when you start shutting down certain flows, certain business models that the need and the wants aren't going to stop, that the end customer is just going to find the animal somewhere else. And I think you've established tonight that you're an excellent business person and that you're you're lawful. And I'm just curious what your expertise would be, what would happen in the underground market, and I guess the 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 market online.
Sure. Well, basically, what happens when you shut down a pet store, my pet store, the people that come to me will be going online. So the problem with online sales, as we know, is that we can't control anything. People are not educated on what to look for. So I know through through experience that some of these places that have shut down brokers are what we call it that are used. So these are people that go to different breeders, and they can be good and they can be bad. And they buy their dogs at a cheaper amount, and then they sell them online. They don't have the parents there. They don't have any guarantees. These are the one people that are meeting in parking lots. So yes, when you limit the the public sale of something like this, it goes underground, which is the problem.
And just for clarification, your store is in the Cause Law Center, right?
That's right, yes.
Well, I just got to tell you that I bought my very first hamster when I was like five years old. And, okay, well, thank you very much, Mrs. Gerald. I appreciate your time. And just for the record, I love bear and I love animals.
Any other questions of the deputent members of council? Okay, Counsel Morales and then Counsel Harvey, then I do want us to move along with the agenda. Counselor Harvey, go ahead.
Um, you said my name.
Sorry, I called you first, Counsel Morales. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mary Lehman. I just wanted to give some feedback to Ms. Fitzgerald, because I I do want to reinforce positive reinforcement. At no point did I expect you to answer yes when Counsel McCann said, have you ever gotten any negative feedback or criticism, like what business owner could ever say that? But it gave a lot more credibility to your deputation. You you approached this from a wholesome perspective, and you gave us you gave us insight into when you get your feedback, how you handle that, and the guarantees and the other steps that you take. So once again, again, deputations are usually slanted, and they warp reality to cater to what they want to convey to us in general over the six years that I've been here. And I've never expected somebody to give such a frank, honest, detailed answer. And again, for myself, it gave a lot more credibility to your presentation.
Thank you.
So while I appreciate the positive feedback, Counsel Morales, it's questions of the deputent. Counselor Harvey, do you have a question for the deputent?
Yes, your worship. The deputant was obviously very, very brief, and I think in some aspects in comparison to my conversation I've had with her to learn about this issue, she sold herself a little short. But in that conversation, you you brought up an interesting item that you didn't decide to talk about in your deputation. And that is how you've helped our local SPCA at times when they've been at capacity. Are you in a position where you'd like to speak about how how you've helped out the local SPCA?
Yeah, thank you. I tried to keep it short, and I know that right now the amendment is basically for puppies. That could change to kittens, for example. Years ago, we were approached by people that had kittens, unwanted kittens. And the SPCA was full, the different rescues were full, no one could take them. So this is how we started taking in kittens. So we don't have kitten breeders. There's no, I don't even know if there's kitten mills to my my recollection. But when when there are kittens that are unwanted, we take them in, we deal with a local vet, Dr. Sullivan. And we vet check, vaccinate, deworm, treat them for fleas, ear mites, parasites, things like that, and then we find homes for them. So, you know, we haven't, we don't buy kittens. We we basically take them in and take care of them and rehome them to to loving homes. There's also different rescues, you know, Donna Power brought up rabbits. I deal with some amazing rabbit breeders right now, but I also take in rescue. If someone calls and they can't take care of their animal, I take it in. I find it a home that is appropriate for them, and I'll do that for a hamster. I'll do it for a bunny, a guinea pig. I've done it for turtles. So, you know, it's not just about, and I'm not a registered rescue, and I don't want to be one. It's a lot of work, and I have a job already. But, yeah, when the opportunity presents itself, yeah, we've definitely taken in a lot of different animals and rehomed them.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Harvey, for the question. Thanks, Ms. Fitzgerald. Any other questions for the deputent? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our third deputation on the matter, which is, and thank you very much, Ms. Fitzgerald, for being here tonight. The third deputation is Kim LeBlanc on behalf of the Barry Kennel and Obedience Club. Ms. LeBlanc, welcome to Berry City Council, and you have up to five minutes for your deputation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Counselors. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. My name is Kim LeBlanc. I began breeding purebred dogs in nineteen seventy-three. I'm the breeder owner of National Specialty Winners, World Dog Show winners, and Best in Show winners. I have bred Canada's top dogs in twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. I'm the only Canadian dog confirmation judge to judge at two world dog show events. I was part of the team that created the Canadian Kennel Club, Carina National Charity Show. And I am a former director of the CKC Director for our region and a member of the Barry Kennel and Obedience Club. The Barry Kennel and Obedience Club was incorporated in nineteen seventy-eight. We presently have members that have been longtime breeders of purposely bred dogs, dogs that are companions, guardians, herders, hunters, trackers, therapists, and exterminators of vermin, dogs that have been bred with a purpose that helps farmers, police, hunters, border control, and search and rescue, to name just a few. Our club, like other registered clubs, falls under the bylaws of the Canadian Kennel Club. We are mandated to promote responsible pet ownership in our community, and we do this through offering training and evaluation in canine good neighbor and temperament testing. We offer classes in handling and also volunteer at the library and Pet Expos to promote responsible dog ownership. We sponsor health clinics where owners and breeders can come to complete health tests for their dogs at a reduced cost. We are a community of experienced breeders, trainers, and dog fanciers. I am here today to introduce ourselves and provide you with a starting point to discover more about the breeding, buying, and selling of dogs within Ontario from reputable breeders. We want to be a resource for you. Our governing CKC ethics bylaws restrict any CKC breeder from selling puppies through a pet store or similar retail outlet. CKC breeders do not sell puppies to new owners without a vetting process to assure the best match of puppies to the family that is inquiring. CKC breeders clear the health of their breeding stock through a series of defined health tests for each breed. The results of these tests are held in databases and are available through public access on the Orthopedic Foundation of Animals website. Our club members contribute to continuing education for all dog owners. One example of this is an upcoming Breeders' Genetic Seminar with a highly credentialed geneticist open to all interested people. We are concerned about the movement to rescue dogs from foreign countries and bring them to Canada and Ontario has become a revenue stream that introduces disease and displaces Ontario rescues, such as the Northern Reservation rescues. We support the adoption and rehoming of dogs through rescue organizations. We do not support rescue for revenue. We have also seen recent news stories of mass shipments of puppies from other countries to North America ending in tragedy when upon arrival, a high percentage of the puppies have not survived. This, we believe, is a result of an unprecedented demand for pandemic dogs. Today, we offer our club's collective experience for the Berry City Council as a resource for any issues or questions regarding the breeding and selling of purebred dogs within Canada as well as import and export legislation and logistics. We offer links to helpful sites for your future reference as recorded below. WWW Berry Kennel Club and CKC, and of course, the OFA.org. Thank you for your time on behalf of the Berry Kennel Club.
Okay, excuse me, Ms. LeBlanc, thank you for your deputation. Are there questions from members of council? Counsel Kungle.
Thank you, worship, and thank you for the deputation through you, Mayor Lehman, to Ms. LeBlanc. Ms. LeBlanc, if you've seen the current drafted motion, which is, and again, not to move quickly into changing the bylaw, but to investigate what that would look like and the impacts of that. Based on what you've shared, would you recommend, or is it then on the point that you would not sail through a pet store, that that aspect in the current motion framing should be removed tied to licensed or registered breeder? But any scope of breeder that was added into that amendment should be removed as it does not apply?
Okay, so it's a little bit awkward here. I there have been references to licensed breeders. I'm assuming that is a township license. The Canadian Kennel Club does not allow their members to sell dogs through any retail format. I'm not a hundred percent sure that I agree with them, but that is the bylaws, and that's the code of ethics that we all sign. I don't have any problem finding homes for my puppies, and but I know in the past that people have. And right now, I have never seen anything like this, and I've had dogs since seventy-three. We get emails and text messages every day, people looking for a dog, and they don't want to wait, so they're going to go wherever they can go. There are commercial operations in our province, Amish farmers who are breeding on a large scale. There's huge amount of crossbreed breeding being done to satisfy the designer dog thing that people have become very attached to. There, it's it's very, a very difficult situation to, and I wouldn't say just buy from rescue either. I'm with the other lady on that because not every rescue dog is an easy dog to place. So it's a lot different than buying a little puppy that has not started its life and has full of potential and hopefully no problems.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. That's helpful, and I appreciate your outreach as well around directing staff and and council to resources that you identified.
Thanks, Counsel Kungle. Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, your worship. Actually, through Counsel Kungle, my first question was answered, because listening to the deputation at first, I wasn't sure if if the deputant was in favor or in opposition of of the matter before us. But she she mentioned her credentials when it comes to the CKC. And how how recent have you been on the Board of Directors of the CKC, Ms. LeBlanc?
It has been quite a while since I was on the board. It was two thousand and eight was when I left the board. My husband was sick, so it was not a option at the time. I did run for election again this time, and I did not make it in, but I have been working with them on a few other things. There are dogs brought in from other countries that we do not have an agreement with. And so the dogs have to be inspected to ascertain that they are of sufficient quality to be in the CKC system. And I've been doing that since two thousand and eight. So there's always another job to do at the CKC without actually being on the board.
That's great, because that actually leads into my next question. I I gather you probably saw the same show I did within the past week or two. I believe it was the Fifth Estate, where they highlighted lots of dogs that seem to be imported from Middle Middle Eastern Europe, coming in through Pearson. And there's a whole host of issues from a health perspective with the animals, let alone health from our own perspective here. And it's been identified through that investigative report that upwards of, they allege, up to seventy-five percent of of your CKC members are the people that are importing these animals and then turning around and selling them. And that, from what I understand from watching that show, is flat out against your CKC rules. Can you speak to that, please?
Wow, I don't know where they got those numbers from. CKC people as a group, generally speaking, are much more downplayed than that. They are not generally brokers and don't and cannot, under our bylaws, operate a commercial situation like that. I know an awful lot of Canadian Kennel Club people. There's over a thousand in our area. And I'm going to tell you that I don't know a single one that has brought dogs in to resell. And that sort of story would be very quickly brought out, because I'm you can't, people cannot wait to post something negative about another person on Facebook, and I would find it difficult to think that seventy-five percent, we might have a few people who have come into the CKC for the purpose of legitimizing themselves by saying they're a Canadian Kennel Club member and then turn around and import dogs. But that is not the norm, absolutely not.
Okay, I I will leave it at that. I'm just just wanted to ask a question, because I thought it was a ridiculously high high number myself, and I'll be quite honest with you, the interview with the president from the CKC was not very reassuring, to say the least. But I'll I'll leave my comments at that, your worship.
Any other questions of the deputent, deputent members of council? Okay, seeing none, I will thank you, Ms. LeBlanc, for your deputation and for the information. It that completes our deputations. We have no tax application or communication matters. It brings us to the committee reports. Deputy Mayor Ward, I believe you have the reports.
I do. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Thompson, the planning committee report dated February second, two thousand twenty-one asserted to be received.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that the planning committee report. Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that the planning committee report dated February second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be received. This is to receive the, uh, uh, the application for zoning bylaw amendment submitted by the, by Innovative Planning Solutions for four oh seven to four nineteen Mapleview. It's just to receive the report from the public meeting. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor, please indicate. Anybody opposed? None? That carries. Section, uh, A of the general committee report. Go ahead.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, the section A of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be received.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section A of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be received. It's to receive the report of the city building committee, uh, from February second, and it's the consent items from that meeting. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? None? That carries. Section B, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section B of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section B of the general committee report dated February twenty second as circulated to be adopted. So these are the items. Uh, it's with regards to single-use plastics at city-owned facilities and city events, temporary sanitary servicing arrangements for the Salem Secondary Plan area, uh, Lover's Creek, New Bridge, Talendale Mill Road, uh, a disposition of property matter at King Street, rail crossing agreements for municipal infrastructure and services, twenty twenty to twenty twenty one Ontario gas tax funding agreement, uh, continuance of the digital Main Street program, investigation of advanced left turn signals, uh, addition of a municipal street name, and the COVID nineteen immunization clinics motion. That's what's in section B. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all the question, those in favor of section B? Any opposed? None? That carries. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section C of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section C, the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be adopted. Counselor McCann.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman. I'm going to have a conflict, a very small conflict. One of the companies that I own is a window and door company, so I'll turn my computer off.
Okay, Madam Clerk, has Counselor McCann's potential interest been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lehman, it has.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions on section C? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor? Are any opposed? None? That carries. And, uh, for section D, I will hand the chair over to Deputy Mayor Ward.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. Now, Counselor Harris, Jim Harris, you have a motion?
I apologize, I'm trying to find it, so I'm sorry about.
We can hear you.
I have it if you want me to move it. If you want to switch, who's seconding it?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor, because I, I buried it obviously, so I apologize. Thank you. That's okay.
Hey, Counselor Owen.
All right, so, uh, we have moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Jim Harris, that section D of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be adopted. And that's the municipal heritage register for fifty nine William Street and one eighty eight Collier Street.
Okay, uh, Mary Lehman.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Ward. I'd like to declare a potential, uh, interest in this matter as, uh, one of the properties is a few doors away from my home.
Madam Clerk, has the potential conflict been recorded?
Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor Ward, it has.
Okay, any comments or questions on section D? See none? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. I'll turn the chair back to Mary Lehman.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Ward. Uh, section E, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section E of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section E of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be adopted. This is regarding remuneration for the anti-racism task force. Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, worship. In order to meet my legislative requirements, under section seventeen sub three of the Player Services Act, I will not participate in the discussion or the vote on this matter.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Harvey. Madam Clerk, has Counselor Harvey's potential interest been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lehman, it has.
Thank you. Counselor Natalie Harris, did you wish to speak? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yes, through you, I'd also like to declare a potential, uh, community area interest. I don't have the exact wording in front of me right now, but it pretty much goes along the lines of I'm going to listen to the integrity commissioners' requests and advice. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, has Counselor Natalie Harris's potential interest been recorded?
Yes, Mary Lehman, it has.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question by those voting. Those in favor, please indicate. Is anyone opposed? None? That carries. Thank you. Uh, section F, Counselor Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section F of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section F of the general committee report dated February twenty second has circulated to be adopted. This was the deferral of the Water Operations Branch, uh, drinking water system reports. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of section F? Any opposed? None? That carries. Thank you. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Ward, section G.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section G of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section G of the general committee report dated February twenty second has circulated to be adopted. This is with regards, uh, to traffic calming asphalt speed cushions. Comments or questions? Seeing none, those in favor of section G? Are any opposed? None? That carries. Section H, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section H of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section H of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one has circulated to be adopted. This is with regards to I Love Berry signage. Counselor Jim Harris.
Great, thank you, Mary Lehman. Put this on the floor as, uh, written, and I have an amendment. So it's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor, uh, R. Robert Thompson, that motion twenty one G, uh, zero forty of section H of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one concerning the I Love Berry signage be amended as follows. One, in paragraph one, by adding the words promote civic pride after the word together and before the word and encourage. In paragraph two, delete the name Counselor R. Thompson and add the names Carol Anne M. Ryan in brackets, Chair Berry Public Art Committee, and Karen Carter, brackets, Executive Director, McLaren Art Center, and I can speak to that.
Good, thank you. Uh, it is moved by, uh, Counselor Jim Harrison, seconded by Counselor Rob Thompson. Uh, it's an amendment, uh, that motion twenty one G forty of section H, a general committee report from February twenty second concerning I Love Berry be amended, I Love Berry signage. Be amended as follows in paragraph one, by adding the words promote civic pride after the word together and before the words and encourage. Paragraph two, delete the name Counselor R. Thompson and add the names Carol Anne M. Ryan, Chair of the Berry Public Art Committee, and Karen Carter, Executive Director, McLaren Art Center. Go ahead, Counselor Harris.
Great, thank you, Mary Lehman. Uh, notwithstanding this passed unanimously at general committee, um, there was still, I believe, opportunity to improve this. And, um, with the fortune that, uh, council has a dedicated membership on the Berry Public Art Committee, and that's, uh, Counselor Thompson and myself, uh, on the McLaren Art Center board, uh, gave us opportunity this week to really reach out to our leads from the artistic community to get their, um, feedback on this effort and what it could mean for the art community and artists. And it was, uh, quite beneficial and illuminating, uh, no pun intended. That, um, this really is, um, potential here, and I am no artist. But I do appreciate art, and I, I, what I learned in my consultation with Ms. Carter, uh, who has extensive experience and did share some information with council, and hopefully people had a chance to look at it, that this type of, um, installation, um, the beauty and interest of it is its animation and its, um, ability to change. And, uh, so she provided some wonderful examples from across the world, the world, and even most recently with, uh, the, um, uh, installations in Toronto. So with that noted, I, I really am excited about, um, the Berry Community Art, uh, Berry Hog Art Committee and the McLaren being a part of this. I think that for this to be successful, having our art leaders involved in this process at, at every step. Last week, we put them in paragraph one. This week, they're added to paragraph two. So I really think to, um, kind of, um, in listening to the feedback from residents around the, the potential for this to, um, be something more than just a sign, and I think that in, in hearing that Ms. Carter had said to me that it really has potential to be, um, a catalyst for the art community. And moving forward, the beauty will be of it being able to be changed, and I think having them involved will be a wonderful addition to the motion, so I hope council will support this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. Uh, any comments on the amendment? Counselor McCann.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman, and to, uh, Counselor Harris, you know, uh, that was really beautiful. I really appreciate that, and, uh, I definitely welcome your and Counselor Thompson's amendment. Uh, you know, this is a definitely a, uh, a passion project. Uh, it's not original, for sure it's not, but that is what I think the beauty of the sign has. It's just going to be bold, it's going to be elegant, and it's really going to unite this city, uh, or a stronger, uh, United States city. Uh, and you kind of, uh, touched something that, uh, I fully expected to happen is that this will take on an energy on its own, and this will take on a purpose all of its own, you know, and, uh, and I was sitting talking to a few business owners this, uh, Sunday, and I'm just thinking to myself, like, how cool and how beautiful would this be? That when you walk into a pizza joint, or you walk into a gym, you walk into a golf simulator, and, uh, you see all of the employees from that business standing beside the sign, which just for clarification, please, uh, Mayor Lehman and, uh, Ms. Cook, it's not I Love Berry, it's Love Berry. And the I is supposed to be the person or the company supporting that, so just, it's a little thing, but it's also a big thing. Uh, so just, uh, you know, um, and I just thought, you know, you walking into that pizza place, you walking into that golf simulator, or you walking into, uh, Napoleon or other businesses, and the first thing you see is a sign of Love Berry and that group, the employees, standing in front of it and just embracing this city. And the connection that will have towards customers, uh, whether they're from Berry or not, I just think, I never thought of it, I thought that was just a beautiful thing. So, uh, you were gracious enough, uh, Counselor Harris and Counselor Thompson, to, uh, let me know, uh, that, uh, you'd like to make some changes, uh, from my motion, and, um, I am fully supportive of it, but I went a little step further, and I actually reached out to the two, um, um, ladies, uh, Carol Anne Ryan and Karen Carter from McLaren. And I had some fantastic conversations with both of them, and actually like enlightened me with some of their ideas. And they're going to be an excellent contribution to the committee that actually, you know, uh, brings forth, um, the final, um, the final signage. Sorry to see, uh, Counselor Thompson going. I think that he would, uh, bring a, uh, a strong voice, as I know he did quite a bit of work, uh, with, uh, the, the Heart and Crown down in, in the Meridian Place, that's really the Heart and, um, Horn. Um, but I'm sure we'll still get his advice. So I guess I'm going, once again, a long way around Lake Simcoe, but you know what? So be it, because this is going to be a great project for the city of Berry, and I just want to maybe make a shout out to, um, um, I'm going to mess up her name, Aurelia Stack, who made a deputation. Uh, I was speechless and I was humbled, and I was super appreciative, and there's the thing I love about life are moments in time that you never forget, and, uh, Aurelia, I'm telling you, I'll never forget that moment. That was a beautiful deputation, and thank you for that. Thank you, Mary Lehman, for letting me go on a little bit.
Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mary Lehman. No, I absolutely support this amendment. I think it's great, and I just wanted to clarify this is still to view the feasibility, yes, of the sign, just so everyone watching knows that. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Yep. Uh, Counselor Kangal, on the amendment.
Thank you, worship, through you to Counselor Jim Harris. Um, yes, my appreciation for the outreach you've been doing with McLaren and others, and I do think it's an improvement. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to see this change to the current motion, so I will support it at that lens. I'll hold my other comments to the overall motion around the direction I hope it takes.
Okay, thank you. On the amendment, anyone else? Okay, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the amendment, please indicate. Anybody opposed? None? That carries. Uh, Counselor Ailwen, I saw you next.
Thank you, Mary Lehman, uh, and thank you to Counselor Jim Harris and Counselor Thompson for that amendment. It improves, uh, the overall potential for this project. I do have, uh, another amendment, um, and I will, um, speak to it briefly first. So it is a referral motion, um, to the city building committee, and, uh, I want to make it clear, I don't want to cut off, you know, I know referral motions aren't debatable. I don't want to cut off discussion. I think there's a great opportunity for us to actually continue this discussion at city building where, you know, debate is more flexible, um, and we can have more of an open dialogue, because I think there are still a few pieces that we need to figure out here, and in particular, um, that's around public engagement, because I've heard pretty overwhelmingly from the public, uh, these past couple of weeks, um, that most people are opposed to this sign, whether it's the dollar amount it's fundraised or not. So I, I think we really need to think about what that public engagement process could look like, uh, and I think we could, uh, talk about that more in depth at city building rather than at council, where we have restrictions about debate. So, um, I will be putting that motion on the floor, so that is moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Ritma that motion twenty one G forty of the section, of section H of the general committee report dated February twenty second, two thousand twenty one concerning the I Love Berry signage be referred to the city building committee for further discussion, including potential community engagement, location, and public art considerations.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a referral motion on the floor, uh, as an amendment. Um, Madam Clerk, uh, is that debatable?
Thank you, Mary Lehman. No, a referral motion is not debatable.
Okay, so the motion is to send the item to city building committee. Sorry, it's not debatable, so just to be clear, uh, both Deputy Mayor Ward and Counselor. Yep, questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Ward, then Counselor.
Do we know when that committee meeting is? Do we have a date?
Fair question, Madam Clerk.
Um, we do have a meeting tomorrow night, but we also have another one scheduled on, um, in April. And unfortunately, I left my schedule in the council chamber where I am not right now, so it is around the beginning of April. The next meeting would be when this would be discussed.
Okay, uh, question, Counselor Morales.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman, also a point of, a question of process and not to the, uh, to the most. Um, the mover, Counselor Ailwen, said that this would give it more liberty, better ability to be discussion, more flexibility. Could you, I don't know if this is a question for you, for the clerk, or for him. I find that like one hundred percent false. If we're referring this to a committee that does not have every single member of council as a formal committee member, I don't care that people can voluntarily attend, how is that increasing, um, and breaking down the barriers of communication and discussion by sending it to a committee that is smaller, um, into the future than at general committee and council? I just, because that, because those points that he made are the foundation of this referral, I figured it would be, uh, valid to ask that.
Well, normally I wouldn't allow either that question or the response, but since you've asked it, I'll allow the response. Um, and I'll urge Counselor Ailwen in that, uh, simply to speak to the procedural reason, um, that, or sorry. Uh, and not even the, you know, Counselor Morales has, um, commented on the, uh, reason for the motion uh, and argued against it, so I'm going to allow you to make comments in response, but we're not going to have any debate of the motion. It's a referral motion. Go ahead, Counselor Ailwen.
Uh, thank you, Mary Lehman, and thank you for the question, Counselor Morales. My answer would be, you know, this is what we do when we have to talk about something more in depth, and this committee, uh, the mandate of this committee is to look at city center revitalization, infrastructure, business and creative development, uh, and parks, so I think it's, uh, fits within the mandate of this committee, and I would hope that, uh, all members of council would attend, uh, that meeting, and I'm sure, uh, And I'm sure Chair Rittma would be more than willing to entertain questions and comments and suggestions from all members of council.
Okay, I am going to call the question on the referral, the amendment to refer the matter to City Building. Those in favor, please indicate. In favor of referral, please indicate. And opposed? Sorry, I'm going to need to see those again. And I'm just going to ask you to only hold your card up when you're, when I'm, when I'm calling your position. So those in favor, please put up your cards that say yes. One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four. Those opposed? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, the amendment fails. On the motion as amended, further discussion. Counselor Kangal and then Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Sorry, and I may have been preemptive, but the motion as amended. I'll hold and speak to, I guess, the motion as a whole.
Yeah, that's what we're on. So go ahead.
So overall, of course, I was in favor of referring it. I've got some questions and I'll speak to them in case they may get incorporated into what gets investigated with staff in the framing of feasibility. So, you know, a couple of things come to mind, why I'm not feeling comfortable supporting it at this time overall. But I think it would be great, as that comes back, to be really clear about when is a donation a donation? And perhaps it's because this is a bit of a unique process, but it feels like, as it's entered into the relationship of the city and city staff, tied to procurement, seeking a vendor, and then having some decision making. My question, I think, hopefully as it comes back, is helping the public and myself to understand, while Counselor McCann has spoken to fundraising and has generated an amazing amount of money, how do we be clear about what aspect of the process is started? And are there considerations by which we can clarify things that we're seeing perhaps in social media or in reference to where it's going to go? Because Meridian keeps coming up into conversation. So has, is that string attached to the dollars that have already been dedicated? Is there an expectation tied to funds that have been spoken to already being generated? That may change or shape the process which we go in? There is already conversation about, and I believe Counselor McCann just spoke to, you know, what the sign will and won't be around what the "I" would represent as an individual versus "heart Barry," and some graphics of that, you know, that we've seen that are out there. So what part of the design, I think, is, you know, part of how things have been communicated and fundraised? And I think just really clarifying, if we're driving a process, is there something that perhaps compromises what's been done to date? Or can we be clear about, does the process, because it involves procurement and staff, tie us to also a responsibility for this asset? So another big question is, you know, as this becomes an asset of the city, it also becomes, to my understanding, our responsibility around the life cycle of repair and maintenance. So do we have a general understanding of what that will be and a long-term impact? So for me, there are some pieces that are missing that I'm hoping to have more conversation about. I don't need them here. I think we've seen that the intention is to support the investigation of staff. But my concern is about, you know, how have the donations that have been talked about been facilitated? And do we need to understand if that's at risk, even if we change direction through the process?
Okay, I asked Counselor McCann to respond to that. I think Counselor McCann, the specific questions, Counselor Kangal, you were asking, were, are the donations tied to the sign being in a particular location or a particular design of the sign? Go ahead.
Just give me maybe, if you don't mind, 30 seconds or so to process that and just come up with a clear answer. And I appreciate you summarizing Counsel Kangal's question. If I can be direct with Mayor Lehman through you to Counsel Kangal. I, as we all know, I raised all the funds for the Rainbow Crosswalk, and it was very similar. You know, in manners, I think it took me four hours to raise the funds, and it took me, I think, 12 hours to raise the $50,000. And I had more companies calling me up and people calling me up wanting to donate. And as I told Bob Burton, when he asked me the question, how much have I raised? I said, well, I raised $50,000, you know. In theory, I don't actually have the money in my bank account, if anybody's thinking that. But I had many other people that are looking to donate. So that number is actually much larger. And to give you a full answer, I believe that people donate or have agreed to donate the money because of the vision that they saw that I have for the city of Barry. And because many of them have said, well, it's about time. This is not an original idea. Many different communities around the world have done this. And it was funny, I was laughing at Counselor Harris. He sent me an email from Karen and the Hollywood sign, you know, I mean, of all these talks with signs, I never thought about the Hollywood sign. I mean, that's like probably the biggest iconic sign. So to answer your question, Counsel Kangal, I've taken the responsibility, if council does pass this tonight, to raise the full $200,000. I would love to get as many council members beside me raising funds. I don't want this to be a Mike McCann thing. I want this to be a city barrier thing, right? And, and so, yes, they think it's going to be a Meridian, but by no means did I say that I had the final say. I told all the donors that this is a city council decision and kept it ambiguous. So if it were to, let's say, move to a different location, then that may or may not prevent someone from donating. But if I had to give you an educated guess, I would say that it would not. So I've kept things very vague.
Okay, and I think part two of the question was, were the donations tied to the design of the sign?
Once again, Mayor Lehman, appreciate the question. I don't want any council members here to think that I stood up and said, this is what's going to happen. I made everybody very clear, this is a decision by 11 people, that not one council member, including the mayor, has more power than anybody else, that we all have the same power, the same influence. This has to be a decision made by the majority of council. So I, answer your question, no.
Okay, Counselor Kangal, we do only speak once at council. Were there, was there anything else you wanted to ask while you have the floor? Or comment?
I guess my, my comment would be that when this, if it does pass for an investigation with staff, if we can also get information back to appreciate, does a process tie us to a responsibility to say, and I fully appreciate, the idea came forward by one individual, right? And it's got momentum and fundraising and, but with our involvement as a city council, for me, when I think about the collective whole, and this is all of us doing it together, for me, you know, it would be a different pathway. It would be, how do we maximize this amazing fundraising opportunity? But actually, look at how we decide with the public about where we can best give that back. But that's, that's me and that's personal. But when we talk about it being a city thing versus, you know, something that would be fundraised by a particular individual for a particular outcome, there are nuances in there. And so, you know, I would say if I, if there's a role in this to say, continue the fundraising, but let's put it towards revenue generation or a direct impact with a program or service, like deferred revenue, deferred expenses that we've actually supported in the budget, like the Shavon Center Sound System that supports the Colts, the Mariposa Skates and other events and as a venue, you know, is something we're kind of struggling to kind of even be obliged in our contractual arrangements. Those are things where I would say, that's where I would put the money to our consideration versus an asset that will become ours, that will become an expense, and is not tied to anything specific to revenue generation or a program and service. That's my final.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Counselor Kangal. I will go next to Counselor Thompson, and I do have a speaker's list. Go ahead, Counselor Thompson.
Mayor Lehman, through you, I'll keep this very short. I think the, the work that was done with the amendment and now on the motion as a whole, has addressed a lot of the concerns. And this is for information. Staff could come back with an absolute no, it's not feasible. And to say public engagement, this is for July 2022. And, you know, Mayor Lehman, you said, you know, it's been one of those days, rough night. Like 10,000 businesses are on the verge. And, you know, we're spending time about a sign, public engagement, that's great. The horn in the heart, zero public engagement, lots of public funded. They didn't ask where they're going to put it, murals on buildings, you know, soapboxes. This is, we have committees, we respect them, we take their judgment and their motions, and we go forward. Every time, if you don't like it, don't vote for it. But when you start shunning people that are, you know, raising money and we're wasting all this time and people are watching, they don't know if their business is going to open tomorrow on their, they're saying, this is our council? And, and, you know, I know what their motions are coming, but the headline tomorrow will be puppies and signs, 10,000 possible bankruptcies. And like, and that's just my feelings, and I'm really sorry, but like, if somebody's willing to donate money, you can't ask for this and spend it on that. That's misappropriation of funding. It's fraud. You don't do it. When you ask for a purpose, when the people went for the horn in the heart or anything, they didn't spend it elsewhere. Lots of people have reached out to me, lots of people have great ideas. Start fundraising and bring it to the committees. And we can embrace it, we can get behind it. If council is able to help, then we can do so. But I'm really sorry, but I think we need to move on and start really worrying about the real issues that are hurting our businesses today.
Oh man, bless you, Counselor Thompson. You just saved me a bit of a speech. Next on my speaker's list, I have Counselor Rittma.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. And I certainly agree with that sentiment from Counselor Thompson. Last week I voted in favor of this one, but I did it reluctantly. And I'm even more reluctant tonight. And I want to say thank you, Counselor McCann, for your initiative and for, you know, offering to raise money. And there certainly are a lot of unknowns here. And we had two deputations tonight, and one in favor, one opposed. There are lots of questions about where this is going to go and all the parameters around it. And that's why I seconded the motion to send it to City Building, so that we could, you know, speak more than once on the, on the matter and that we could have a more fulsome discussion. Because if this is going to be the public icon for the city of Barry, then it seems to me that we should really have the public behind it and, and have a lot of dialogue and engagement on it. And I, I think I'm with Counselor Thompson. In many ways, I think we have a lot more important things to do than spend time on a sign. Even, even if all of the money is donated, it doesn't seem wise to me, simply because we don't know what, what the payback is going to be. You know, yes, it's going to be on some selfies, but do we really get any bang for our buck out of it? And we don't have any ideas to what the cost to maintain it is. And the struggles that we're going to have is cleaning graffiti off it. And, you know, Counselor McCann, I'm, I'm happy that you're, you're into raising money, and I think that's great. But I think there's a lot of things that, right now, coming out of COVID, hopefully we're coming out of it, that our businesses, especially our downtown, could use 200,000 for, you know. I mean, we could really benefit our downtown if we, if we did a really smart marketing program to really sell downtown. And if we had, if we had another 200,000 for that, maybe that's a really good way to spend it. There's probably, we could give some grants to some hard-hit businesses. There's all kinds of things that I could think of, and I'm sure there's other people that could think of a whole list of things as well. You know, we're, we're still in, in COVID. We just brought in the most ruthlessly cut budget we've ever, ever passed. We have, that we've passed in decades, in fact. This, to me, it's not time to spend money on extras that we really don't need, even, even if it is donated money. I also don't think there's any place in this, in Meridian Square for this sign. You know, and somebody may be able to convince me that somewhere else it might work, but certainly not on, on Meridian. And we already have a landmark that says Barry. It's called the Dreamcatcher. And that, that has, has found a place in a whole lot of places. We also have the, the heart and the horn. I think that there, before we go any farther, I would like to see a whole lot more thought and public input before we go anywhere. I really just don't think that this sign is going to unite it, unite us. It seems to be dividing people, and that's not what I want to see. So thank you, Counselor McCann, for your creative work here. But, but for me, I really can't support it, and I'm asking council not to support it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Rittma. Counselor Morales, I have you next.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. If you would have asked people if they wanted a car, they would have said they wanted faster horses. This whole discussion last week reminds me like, why, man, it's hard designing cars by committee. There's an unwritten rule of charity, and the unwritten rule of charity is you can't tell someone to donate. You can't tell them to, who to donate, and you can't tell them how much to donate. Most people respect that rule. So, Counselor McCann, I'll be straight up with you. I'm not going to help you fundraise a single penny, but I do wish you the best of luck. On the same unwritten rule, to the point that I've heard here and from the community, there's much better initiatives out there. Absolutely there are. I wouldn't have done this, not at this time, but this is what you've chosen, and you know what? You've owned it. I've talked about the sign. Many people downtown have talked about the sign. It's not an original idea. Everyone's talked about it saying, wouldn't it be cool to get a sign? No one's actually taken the work. Or maybe they have looked into it and they're like, it's hard to fundraise for that kind of money, that you've actually taken this. So again, if you want to, if people want to fundraise for better issues, nothing is stopping them from doing it. Like literally, I applaud them as much as I'm applauding you. If they want to fundraise for those issues, absolutely. So the fact that we're confusing those two trains of thought here and council members are repeating those points from members or sharing those points from members of the community is confusing because they're not exclusive. That's, that's a, that's a fallacy in logic argument. Yeah, and then also to the point, the other points I've heard is, to the points of not voting in favor of it right now, because there's questions to be answered about selection, design, maintenance, how selfies work. I say this very amicably, Counselor Rittma, the reason why Spirit Catcher would be a good selfie is, I don't know if you've ever tried to take a selfie of the Spirit Catcher I have, it doesn't work, because you have to put the camera essentially on the floor, and you just get the no shot that you get on Zoom. So they, literally does not work. That is just faulty logic to be voting against this because of questions that, valid questions that we have about the sign, maintenance, assumption of responsibility. Because the current motion, the staff report is going to answer those questions. Every question that was brought forward, just by every previous counselor, will be answered in the staff report. They listen, they do their jobs, and if it comes back and it's a mess, then we don't move forward with it. Or maybe we fix it or pivot. So the logic of saying, well, we're not moving forward to this because you have these concerns, again, it's just like faulty, faulty argument logic. And then finally, the desire to send this to a committee where some counselors don't have a vote, whether they can attend, but they do not have a binding vote. For a motion to send it to staff, that's essentially a group of people or a committee, to then write a report that if approved, we'll see a group of people, community members, let's call them a committee, to then get the sign. Think about that for a second. We almost passed an amendment, I'm glad it failed, to create a committee, to send this to a committee, to then send it to a committee of people, to send the project to a committee of people to do. Like, this is just, it's painful, and it's literally the definition of death by committee. I didn't think I would ever have this much discussion or to say about a sign. I thought this would have gone away on Tuesday, and then I realized people were still talking about it. But again, Counselor McCann, I'm not going to raise a single penny for this. I applaud you for doing this. There's another, I'll finish with another saying, get on board or get out of the way. There's another, I'll finish with another saying, get on board or get out of the way. I'm getting out of the way, it's just a sign, let's hope it's a good one if it happens.
Thanks, Council Morales, Counselor Natalie Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Through you, I just wanted to say that I unfortunately missed last week's meeting, so I, going into this was a pretty hard no with the sign at this time, I didn't think it was the right timing for this. However, now that Counselor Harris and Counselor Thompson have done the work behind the scenes to get the McLaren and the, the Public Art Committee on board, that's kind of a different story for me now, I think that's a great opportunity for them and I'm happy that this isn't using taxpayer dollars as donations, I agree, let's let people donate where they'd like to donate.
Thanks, Counselor Harris, Counselor Gary Harvey.
Thank you, worship, again, I'm going to keep mine as short as I can and not to reiterate, because I do follow the sentiments of Counselor Thompson, we've spent way too much time on, on this item and I anticipate the one other item tonight is going to gobble up far too much time in comparison to the bigger issues that we face in our city right now. And that's a lot of people facing personal struggles. And as we've heard over the weekend, and several of us have worked behind the scenes when it comes to the struggles the businesses have with this current lockdown criteria that we face and but besides that, in the end, we're just asking for information, it's just asking for staff to do their job, look at this, come back and provide the recommendation, there's no money on the table, no taxpayers' money even being considered for this. And I'm, I'm just floored at how much conversation has taken place here and also publicly when you start looking at some of the stuff online. Because ultimately, it's not taxpayers' dollars. And I'm willing to sit and listen and let's see what staff come back with and listen to their recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Harvey, Counselor Jim Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman, I'll try to be brief too, yeah, it's somewhat ironic, we want to spend less time, we want to go spend more time on it somewhere else, I think it's time to trust staff, I think it's time to trust. And this is to investigate the feasibility, I think we need to make that point again and again. It passed unanimously at General Committee, it passed, amendment passed with the having the McLaren and the Berry Committee involved, passed unanimously, I believe, as well, so the opposition is somewhat surprising when we're trying to investigate the feasibility. And I trust staff, and one thing I heard in the deputations and I've heard as well is, is the comment about engagement, so I believe staff have heard that and the importance of engagement can be managed, I believe, through this process, so, and I trust staff to bring back a report. And one thing I really want to, when I spoke to Ms. Carter, one thing that really got me excited about this and it was that it can be a catalyst for art community. And there are not, and it's been said tonight, not a lot of opportunities, it's said in the rhetoric around this, this opportunity, opportunities for our art community, and they've suffered through the pandemic as well. So wouldn't it be incredible if this gets a report from staff that is in favor? Then now we've got an activated and animated opportunity to leverage, to support our artists and their art. Because that's what these signs do, that's what I've learned, that they're not static, they don't sit there, they change. And, and art can be displayed on them and through them. So I'm excited for the art community, not the business community, I'll benefit too. But I'm looking forward to that staff report and really in, in, in interest from our art community to be able to leverage this to support their members of our community who give so much and create so much value added that often is taken for granted, so thank you for those, for hearing those comments.
Thanks, Counsel Harris, Counsel McCann.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. A lot has been said and you know, I live in the sales world, I live in the marketing world, the advertising world, and there's a lot of sizzle and there's a lot of steak. And I write quite frankly, I've heard a lot of sizzle from the opposition. I think Counsel Morales, even though you say you're not going to help me, I think you're going to help me because you're going to get, you're going to want to be a part of this. And I think that Claire Ripmey, quite frankly, and I hope you don't mind my directness, but I truly believe that many of your comments were completely irresponsible. Right? We are looking for a staff report right now, nowhere in the motion does it say that it's going to be in Meridian. All it says in the staff report is that it's going to have our beautiful Lake Simcoe in the background. And the Spirit Catcher, quite frankly, is public art, but I don't know what you see when you see the Spirit Catcher, but I don't see any reference to the city of Berry anywhere near that. Like Counselor Thompson, like Counselor Harvey, I, you know, there are much bigger issues. A hundred percent there are, but we're leaders of the city and we need to look at the now, but we also need to look at the tomorrow. Right? And we're going to be out of the pandemic, we hope, in the next, in the next six, eight, nine months. At least we're going to be in a more stable place. And what better motion can we have that next year, when Canada Day, that we all celebrate, what we all obviously love to our hearts, is the city of Berry. Right? So I just want to, I'm going to ask for a recorded vote, Mayor Lehman, but I just want to leave my comments with, this is a staff report. We're just getting information. The community in less than 12 hours have donated $50,000 plus, 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 plus. I don't let social media or newspaper clippings tell me how to vote on council or influence me on council. I let emails, phone calls, text message, or person-to-person conversations help direct and help influence my decision-making. So once again, I do not let social media influence my decisions. Also, the BIA were first to jump on board and be supportive of this. You know why? Because they had the same idea, they told me. The Chamber of Commerce, which there's a council member here that I believe unofficially are very supportive of this. Tourism Berry, very supportive of this. The McLaren Art Center, very supportive of this, as Counsel Jim Harris has mentioned. And the Public Art Committee, I, I don't know that their official statement is, but definitely their chair, Carolyn Ann Ryan, is very supportive of this. I don't know any other motion that we've had that we're only looking for information, where we've had so much dialogue, so much controversy, right? And I believe that, you know, I do sales for a living, I believe if I asked Gary Harvey to put this forward, this would have been a three-minute discussion, but because it's Counsel Mike McCann, it's now become a two-week vacation, a two-week conversation. So, I'm going to ask for a recorded vote, I am in favor of the Love Berry sign and I believe it is going to strongly unify our city, but we'll make that decision when it comes back in six months or so. Thank you, Mayor Lehman.
Thanks, Counsel McCann, Deputy Mayor Ward, next.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman, and I'm firmly in the camp that I can't get excited about the sign one way or the other, but I'm also firmly in the camp of not getting in somebody's way if they've got an idea and wants to run with it and wants to raise all the funds. I think there is, having said that, I think there is value in the sign, I really believe that it'll help tremendously in the city's social marketing in the future, because that is the future, people taking selfies. I don't think people are going to come to Berry to see the sign, but when they're here, they may get the picture in front of the sign and send it out around the world to everybody that knows them. But I do have an interest in what my city looks like. And because of that, I do want to have, you know, final say in where the sign goes and what it looks like, I think those are the two, for me, the two really important things, I want to make sure it's in the right location, I'm not sure what that is. And I want to make sure it looks really unique, something unique to Berry, I do not want a sign that looks like every other community sign, I mean, it does, it can look something like them, but it's got to have something unique, that uniqueness in Berry for me is the water, the bay, and somehow it's got to incorporate that. I don't know what it is, I'm not a graphic artist, I'm not an artist at all, so I'll leave that to the brighter minds. But I do have a point of clarification, I'm just in the motion that's before us. I'm a little unclear what we're going to see after one and what we're going to see after number two, number one talks about the, I'm not sure you can answer this, but the proposed sign, but, and the investigate the feasibility, procuring a sign to bring the city together, encourage residents, and then report back to General Committee, and then number two says, the final design will be chosen by the committee, so I'm not clear what we're going to see number one in a report, what we're going to see number two in the memorandum, I just want to make, get some clarity on that. Are we going to know the actual design and location when that first report comes back to us at the General Committee?
I'll ask Ms. James Reed how she reads the direction to staff that would result from that motion.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Lehman, to Deputy Mayor Ward. It's my understanding of the wording of the motion that we will be reporting back with a fulsome report that would include the location for councils to approve. So what we're, what we're anticipating is that we would bring forward two or three recommendations and, and let council pick where you'd like to see it with an artist's rendering of a sign, but it would not be the final design of the sign. That would be something that would come out of the procurement through our, through our procurement process, so the selected vendor would then be asked to come forward with three designs. And once we've selected as staff the vendor, then this committee that is including the mayor, Counsel McCann, and the two members, the one of the McLaren and the Public Art Committee as amended tonight, they would select the final design from the vendor that we have selected as staff, because we can't have council members participate in the procurement process. And it's my understanding from the wording is that that would then be reported back to General Committee in the form of a memo.
Okay, and that's, yeah, and thank you for that, I just have still clear on what we're going to see in the first report in terms of, and what the final is, and it's not going to change that much then, we're going to have a good idea what the sign looked like after the first report, is that correct?
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Deputy Mayor Ward, I'm anticipating that that first report will have a lot of elements that General Committee's area council has been discussing tonight, for example, the maintenance costs that we're anticipating, the electrical requirements, all, who's, how, how people change the lighting on the sign, all those kind of details. I'm also expecting a recommendation with respect to at what, what point, how much fundraising needs to be brought forward before we can go, hit go on our procurement? Because we don't have any funds to pay for this if we don't have the fundraising brought into the city. So I'm actually not expecting that it would be the final design. I'd like to see that our, we put that through a procurement so that we can get the vendors to bid on that as part of our procurement. So it would just be an artist's rendering that we would likely do in-house at that first report back and that the, the selection would go through the RFP process and come forward with three creative designs.
I'm not sure if that clears it up for me or not. I guess, I mean, I'd kind of like to know what the sign's going to look like in that first report, I don't mean in exact detail, but I want to know if it's going to be like a vertical sign, a horizontal sign, I just, I just wanted to have a rough idea what the sign will look like, because it'll help us knowing where to put it, by what it looks like in my mind.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, we will have a concept that we would do in-house, but it wouldn't be what, what will be the absolute final, because that was the intent, as I understood it, of this working group that would actually choose the preferred sign design.
Okay, I mean, we have a lot of creative people in the community, I think it's been mentioned by other people and I really want to see them give us their ideas. You know, something that's very creative and unique to Berry, so hopefully that, you know, we'll get, we'll go out there for ideas anyways, I guess is what I'm saying.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, that is not how the motion is worded, so if that is the intention of council, I would suggest that you would need an amendment to that motion.
I'm going to suggest, I don't know if Counsel McCann, do you have a suggestion? Because I'd like to see, I'd like to see the, go out there to the community for a better design, or for a design, something creative.
You, Mayor Lehman, you mean like better than the design that I came up with?
I didn't say that.
Tell me how you really feel about me, Counsel, or Deputy Mayor Ward. So, I'm with actually you, Deputy Mayor. The mayor and I had a, had a conversation and I actually have one of the top graphic artists for Universal Records, she reached out to do the, do the sign. Design concept free, I said, well, you can't because, you know, I can't get involved in the procurement. And I would love to have public consultation, I was thinking about maybe having like a $5,000 prize to the graphic artist or a developer that came up with, came up with the design, but through staff's expertise, that like, like someone come up with a concept and be like $20,000, right? Someone come up with a concept that is so unique and in so, like, if you want to say different, right, then it's going to come with a bigger price tag. So I believe that senior staff members, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. James Reed, please, is that it's better that it comes from the actual manufacturer, it comes from the actual designer of the actual piece because of the industries of the actual development. And you could come with a plan we all love, but the material cost could be not sustainable, right? You could get a great design that would look like, you know, Dog's Breakfast in three years, so you need someone that's sustainable for, I'd say, a minimum of 30 years, right? And you need to have someone that's structurally sound, so it doesn't incur any extra risk for the city of Berry or any risk of the people that are actually using the sign. So I love your idea, Deputy Mayor Ward, it's the same idea that I had, but you know what, you got to, you got to pick your battles and I think that listening to staff's expertise on this, because they did reach out to other cities. Just to give you a quick example, I want this to be able to move, right? Because I didn't want to offend, you know, the Meridian Place and I wanted maybe that we could have competitions and ask it to maybe go to Park Place, maybe go to in front of the Napoleon, maybe go to the East End, maybe to go on your front yard, Deputy Mayor. But you mean, the problem with, I think, I think it was Ottawa, I believe, Ms. James Reed, is that it was, it was really open and vulnerable to vandalism. So, I just think that hopefully you can kind of trust the committee that we've, that we were about to vote on tonight, and there's going to be lots of engagement. I def, for the, for the, for me to raise $200,000, I'm going to be screaming loudly on social media and I'll be asking for people's design ideas. And like I say, I know Counsel Morales doesn't want anything to do with it and maybe you said you don't either, but if any council member wants to stand beside me and help me with the funding and with the process, I'm, I want this to be a team effort.
Deputy Mayor Ward.
No, nothing else, I'm so caught between the, you know, the procurement process and wanting something to see what artists, or not maybe an artist, graphic designers can come up with that are out there.
Would you like to move an amendment? Because I really would like to move on. And any, do you want to move an amendment or, or not?
I'm not sure if we can move the amendment because of the procurement processes, I was getting that message that.
Okay, I can go to, I guess, Ms. McAlpine on that issue. Ms. McAlpine, could a design competition or design consultation, I guess, be involved before a procurement process?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Certainly, there are opportunities to undertake that process, but it wouldn't allow council to be involved in the decision-making if it's a procurement process and the selection of the vendor. And one of the concerns that, that has been noted is that the design may be something that's desirable, but the cost to manufacture may not be within the parameters of what's able to be fundraised, which was one of the prime reasons why the, the manufacturing and the procurement was tied together to the design in the original motion.
Okay, thanks for that. Deputy Mayor Ward.
I guess we'll see what comes back in, actually, when is it coming back? Ms. James, made a date for that first report.
Ms. James Reed.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Deputy Mayor Ward. I actually don't know how long it's going to take to report back, we're going to be working as fast as we can. We do have a meeting set up for this week internally with staff, but there's many departments that need to be consulted on this. So I'm hesitant to commit to a time until we have that meeting, so perhaps I could follow up with an email once I have a, an idea. I think, I think some of this work may take us a little bit longer and I want to make sure we get it right so that we give you a good recommendation when we come back.
Yeah, I'll go, let's see what the sign comes, let's see what they come back with.
Okay, I think all members of council except one, and that is Counsel Owen, go ahead, Counsel Owen.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. This conversation was why last week I suggested we refer it to the Public Art Committee, I think they have the expertise to do that sort of work, but there wasn't the appetite to do so, I will be voting no. And it's because of the conversation we've just had over the past couple minutes. I don't think we should be spending more time on this sign, we've already spent too much, people are struggling, businesses are struggling in our community, I think it sends the wrong message. We just heard from our staff that many departments need to be consulted, some in-house work on an artist's concept needs to be done. There's at least one staff report, maybe two, and there's at least two. There's at least one staff report, maybe two, and there's at least two more council meetings, the General Committee and a council meeting where we will be talking about this, if not more. So I'm going to vote no because that means we spend no more time on it. So that's my position. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Owen. I think everyone's spoken. A few more thoughts from myself and then I'll ask the clerk to conduct a recorded vote. I did get a chance to talk to a member of Ottawa City Council about their sign and yeah, whoever referenced the vandalism concerns, I think that that was real because of the location in Byward Market. Some echoes there. It's, it's the issues they've had were typically after closing time in a, in an area of the city that does have a lot of people who are drunk at two in the morning. But you know, I think regardless of location and so forth, that will come back. My take on this, especially having heard what I've heard tonight, is this really would have been better as a private project. I think, you know, I think this, what you're seeing around the table is what happens when city procurement, city council, city politics, and you know, sort of designed by committee occurs. And when somebody or individuals want to donate something to the city, for example, I can think of the Rotary Club who've donated six or seven things which are on our waterfront. They'll go fundraise for it. They'll ask council permission to install the whatever, a fishing platform, which went without, I think, any debate a couple of years ago from one of the Rotary Clubs. And you know, it avoids a lot of these issues. I think the problem here is because it was brought as a, as a project to the city. And I think a lot of the discomfort and you, Counselor Thompson, I couldn't have agreed more with your puppies and signs comment. I think the, the reality is there are far, far more important things for us to be spending our time on right now, especially right now. The comment I heard from the council in Ottawa was this doesn't actually bring tourists, but it's a nice thing for tourists once they get here. It is a location that they can go to and get a picture. It is not going to generate business. It's not a, it's, this is, this doesn't generate business. People don't, what generates business, what generates economic energy is a hockey arena that brings thousands of people in for concerts or hockey games. Then they go out and have dinner and then you go out and spend some money and they visit a community and sometimes they stay overnight. Same with the Performing Arts Center. That brings people to a community. That's an economic driver. Those are the kinds of projects we should be spending hours and hours and hours on and we should be fundraising in the community and contributing our own dollars. That's what's going to drive recovery from COVID. I think the two changes that were made to this I see as positive changes. One was there's no public money anymore. Number two is two people who I very much respect, the executive director of McLaren and the chair of our Public Art Committee, are going to influence the project to become something that is more like a piece of public art. Last week, Council Morales and Council McCann were argued for this to say it's not art. It's very clearly not art. It's marketing. I think this week with Counselor Thompson and Counselor Harris's amendment, they've involved two of the highest profile individuals in the community with a lot of experience that will allow this to become something that is at least guided by art. And why that's important, why it's treated that way, and that's important to me that it's treated that way is I'm not really interested in a derivative sign that everybody else has got. It, I think if we're going to do this, we're going to put it in a prominent place in our community. It should be unique, as unique as this community. And I'm hoping that through the process that emerges here, we will end up with something that is quite different than, than other cities. So with that, I will call the question. And I believe Madam Clerk, a recorded vote's been requested. So go ahead and conduct the vote. On the motion as amended, just to be clear, members of council, so it is to in, to include the Chair of the McLaren and the Chair of the Public Art Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I'm going to start with Counselor McCann.
That'd be a big yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Jim Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Natalie Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Counselor Congal?
No.
Counselor Owen?
No.
Counselor Reema?
No.
And Mayor Lehman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to the other item that was held tonight, or that not was held tonight, but was on tonight's agenda and subject of the deputations. That is section I. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section I of the General Committee Report dated February 22, 2020 circulated be adopted.
Think it's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section I, the General Committee Report dated February 22, 2021 is circulated be adopted. This is the amendment to the business and business licensing bylaw regarding the sale of animals. Comments on this one, Counselor Congal?
Yes, thank you. And with respects to some of the, the time of the delegates and different perspectives forward, I'd like to table a motion to refer this to Finance and Corporate Services for discussion, and I can speak to that if there's questions.
Actually, you can't. Once you put it on the floor, it's a referral motion. So was there anything you wanted to say before you introduced that amendment to the motion?
So I think with the communication coming forward and lots of interesting dialogue generated, it'd be great to see if bylaw or representative of staff could join that committee, that's, I believe that's the appropriate one, to also speak to, you know, is there merit in the information coming forward where we've heard that 17 other municipalities have done this? I'm also hearing there's other aspects to consider about what's even possible around bylaw enforcement. And so I'm hoping that this moves to committee so we can actually get more of that conversation because either way, I think if we don't change or add a provision in a bylaw that follows suit with others, it'd be really great to understand and share that with the public about why we are or why we are not recommending that. And then to also allow the broader conversation, I think one of our delegates also identified, I think it was Liz, the curiosity about how we look at licensing, how we look at kennels, and some great information about breeders. So I don't want to get into wordsmithing the current motion, which I think needs to happen if we move forward as it is. I would like to refer it to committee.
Okay, so do you have a seconder for that motion, Counselor Congal? Somebody like to second that? Counselor Owen, saw your hand first. So it's moved by Counselor Congal and seconded by Counselor Owen, that the matter be referred to Finance and Corporate Services Committee. And that's section I of the General Committee Report. That's a referral motions. I'm simply going to call the question. Those in favor of referring this matter, please indicate. Those opposed to referring it? Okay, I'm in favors. So that carries seven to four. It's referred to corporate services. Okay, and with that, the main motion as amended, since that is an amendment to section I. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Counselor Harvey?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to speak and explain why I voted against referring this matter. It's become clear through several days of investigating this and, and speaking with our own staff in regards to this. This poses a whole host of issues. I'm not going to get into the long-winded discussion that I was anticipating we were probably going to get into here. But this group has very clearly demonstrated that they've got bigger, much grander concerns than just the sale of puppies at the retail level. Through several discussions back and forth with Ms. Power after she reached, reached out to council, she made it quite clear that they've got bigger fish that they're looking to fry here. And that is the importation of animals along with puppy mills. And I will not disagree. We've got an issue with that stuff. However, that, that's very difficult for us as a municipality to control. And it's also stepping on the toes of provincial legislation. And that is the big piece that caused me some concern with what came before us. With this motion is the fact that animal welfare falls under provincial legislation. The other piece that was raised and Ms. Power spoke to it about in her deputation was also her concern about consumer protection. And that too is another piece that falls under provincial legislation. So we're being asked to deal with a matter that is of a provincial matter. And when it comes to the importation of animals, that is a federal matter. So I think we need to stay in our wheelhouse and that's why I voted against it. And we have other levels of government and other levels of law that we have to watch that we don't impede on. And also too, if we did enact a bylaw, any provincial statute that it conflicts with will supersede any municipal, municipal bylaw when these matters were to hit a court of law. I will leave my comments at that, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Morales?
I've got a question for CEO Prowse first, Mr. Prowse.
You could, or go ahead with your question.
You could zoom in. So I heard from the council all in early on the previous issue. It's related to this one because it's the same thought process. If we're very concerned about wasting or tying up staff's time when there's other priorities, this right now is an issue that is before us while a very important issue, just to get right, whether this approach is right, whether there's an issue, one, one supplier, one retailer, that's, that's a very complicated issue. If the great concern is we don't want to spend, you know, an unnecessary moment of staff's time and tie them up during this moment, there's bigger priorities. And now we're sending to committee an issue that is provincial and possibly with the input of federal that is hard to approach with our bylaws. I'm wondering, do you know the current essentially backlog of council-directed, not staff initiatives, but council-directed initiatives? Because I know that binder in the council's lounge lives there and not all of the items for discussion, but some of them have lived in perpetuity essentially since previous councils. So I'm just wondering, essentially, I know how staff feel about giving them an item. I know it's going to finance, but if essentially having them input on an item that is very much another, is very much provincial jurisdiction.
I think I know how Counselor, Counselor Prowse, CAO Prowse is going to respond to that, but I'll let him speak for himself.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman, for the flashback. Thank you for the question, Counselor Morales. I feel like I might be stepping into a trap. So at the, at the involving the question as to the pending list, I think Ms. Cook may be able to speak to it, although the number moves. So I'm not sure she's got a up-to-date number on what is on the pending list. But I would say that if, if, if council sends it for staff to deal with, staff will deal with it. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, but certainly we will make it part of our work plan because council at some point has directed it. So that would be my comment around how we would deal with it and perhaps Ms. Cook can speak to the pending list if she's got a sense for what the number might be.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Through you to Counselor Morales. I would say the pending list is upward of about 120 to 150 items. Just off the top of my head of matters that need to be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And I think Deputy Mayor's word smirk is said it all. I have no further comments on that.
Okay, the vote's been taken to refer the matter. Does anyone else wish to speak to the main motion as amended? Counsel McCann?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. I just, Counsel Harvey brought upon that obviously municipalities will be trumped by provincial and federal. How is that going to affect bylaw if they were to try to police this?
I don't know if Ms. Cook or Ms. McAlpine would like to speak to the assertions around provincial versus municipal jurisdiction on this matter? You're on mute.
Through you, Mayor Lehman, to Counselor McCann. I have Ms. Banting on the line and she's probably best to speak to that.
Perfect, Ms. Banting.
Thank you, worship. Through you to Counselor McCann. Provincial and federal regulations will always trump municipal regulations. We can put in place certain requirements from a municipal level. We could put in certain regulations related to sales and so on. That can go for any material. But with respect to the welfare of the animals, provincial regulations would trump anything that we put in place. Our officers would not have the authority to enforce any of the provincial regulations. We would have to refer that back to the provincial regulators, so pause in this particular case that are actually employed by the province to do that investigation and move that forward.
Okay, through you, Mayor Lehman, do you mind?
Go ahead.
So is this, is this amendment going to confuse your staff or is this going to be clear to your staff? Is this, is this a redundant item?
Well, the, the information that you're asking for is to see if it's feasible for us to regulate certain things. Generally speaking, without looking at these other 17 municipalities that I'm not aware of, who put these types of regulations in place. So I can't speak to the other municipalities, but generally if we're looking at licensing, which we already do, licensed pet shops, we regulate the care of the animals when they are in the pet shops currently under our licensing regulations, but we do not regulate where the animal comes from. Trying to investigate and obtaining proper information on where that animal comes from, I think is what's going to be the difficulty in any of these situations. Trying to regulate who the breeder is. Licensed breeders, as you had said through the Canadian Kennel Club and one of the deputants also brought up. They are not permitted to sell through an actual pet store based on their own regulations. So I'm not sure what licensed breeders everyone is referring to. We would have to do more research on what you consider to be a licensed breeder.
Well, I look forward to reading, reading your report, Ms. Banting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions on the motion as amended? Okay, I'll call the question. Those in favor of section I, this is the referral to finance and corporate. Any opposed? Okay, that still carries now, I think, six to five as amended. I am in favor. Okay, section J, please, Deputy Mayor Ward.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section J of the General Committee Report dated February 22, 2021 is circulated be received.
Okay, it's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section J of the General Committee Report dated February 22 is circulated be received. This is the report of a confidential personal information matter regarding appointments to the Accessibility Advisory Committee and Active Transportation and Sustainability Advisory Committee. Comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. Those in favor of section J, anybody opposed? None carries. Section K, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section K of the General Committee Report dated February 22, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that section K of the General Committee Report dated February 22, 2021 be adopted. This is the committee appointments. Deputy Mayor Ward, I believe you have an amendment.
You do have an amendment? Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that motion 21G043 of section K of the General Committee Report dated February 22, 2021 concerning the committee appointments be amended by adding the following paragraphs. Two, that Counselor Gary Harvey be appointed to Tourism Berry, the Tourism Working Group. Counselor Anne Marie Congo be appointed to the Communities in Bloom Committee and the Council of Clare Reema be appointed to the committee. Appointed as the Chair of the City Building Committee to replace Counselor Mike McCann. Three, that procedural bylaw 2019-100 as amended be further amended in paragraph three A of Schedule A reference committee to reduce the number of members on City Building Committee from five to four.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Ward. Did you wish to speak to the amendment at all?
No.
Okay, anybody wish to speak to the amendment? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of the amendment? Anybody opposed? None that carries on the main motion as amended. Any further discussion on section K? Seeing none, call the question. Those in favor? Any opposed? None that carries. Pardon me. Deputy Mayor Ward, Planning Committee Report from February 23.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, section A of the Planning Committee Report dated February 23, 2021 is circulated to be received. Move by myself, second by Counselor Thompson, section A of the planning committee report dated February 23rd, 2021 is circulated to be received.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, second by Counselor Thompson that section A of the planning committee report dated February 23rd. Be received. It's to receive the report of the public meetings last week regarding 970 Mapleview Inc. Or 970 Mapleview. Sorry, this was 932 Mapleview Drive East is the address of the property. The company is named 970 Mapleview Inc. And the second matter was the proposed amendments to the community information, a community improvement plan. Tell it's been a long weekend. Comments or questions on section A of the planning committee report? Seeing none, those in favor? Any opposed? None that carries. Section B, please.
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson. That. Section B of the planning committee report dated February 23rd, 2021 is circulated to be adopted.
Thank you. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, second by Counselor Thompson that section B of the planning committee report dated February 23rd is circulated to be adopted. This is for the zoning bylaw and application by Corral Sophia Lane Housing Inc. For 113, 117 Bayfield. And six, eight, 10, and 12 Sophia Street East. Comments or questions on section B? Okay, I just wanted to make a very brief comment because this one will significantly add to the supply of affordable housing in our community. It is a very credible and experienced charitable foundation who very quietly go about their good work in Barry. They've got a great board. They've got a lot of energy and commitment. They do own a building right across the street. Which they built some time ago, and they also own a number of units all across the rest of the city. This is one of those quiet unsung organizations. Who help hundreds of people in our community and have been managed well. And that's the other really good piece because. They've been managed so well that they're now in a financial position to do this. Also doesn't hurt that property values of Barry have gone a long way up because while that increases affordable housing challenges. It also increases the value of their properties. And for those charitable and not for profit organizations out there that that own property and are able to use that. Funds, those funds to do something like this, this is fantastic. So. This is two thirds affordable building at Bayfield and Sophia, and I want to thank them. For their application. It took a long time to get here, which was not their fault. They went through some twists and turns, both with the approval. And the, the design of the building. But here we are and. This went on consent to planning committee, so I'm sure we'll give it our final blessing tonight. But with that, I will call the question on it. Those in favor of section B of the planning committee report? Are any opposed? None that carries. Thanks Deputy Mayor Ward. Section C, please.
Move by myself, second by Counselor Thompson that section C of the planning committee report dated February 23rd, 2021 is circulated be adopted.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, second by Counselor Thompson, section C of the planning committee report dated February 23rd, 2021 as circulated be adopted. This is with regards to the temporary use extension for 161 Innisville Street. Liquidation Nation. Comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor of section C? Are any opposed? None carries. Okay, that brings us to the end of the community or the committee reports. I think. And we do have. All right, just got to get to the right spot in my own agenda here. We do have a motion without notice tonight. With regards to the Canada Healthy Communities Community Initiatives Grant Application. So. First is the motion without notice. And Counsel Reepma, you have this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there's a motion without notice. And it's moved by myself, seconded by yourself. That pursued a section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100. Permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning authorization to submit an application for the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative.
Good, thank you. It is the procedural motion to bring to the floor a motion without notice pursuant to section seven, one of the procedural bylaw permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning authorization to submit a grant application for the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative. The procedural motion does require two thirds vote. I will call the question. Those in favor of allowing the motion without notice to the floor? Are any opposed? None that carries. Go ahead, Counsel Reepma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The move by myself, seconded by yourself. Number one, that notwithstanding motion 21G 06 concerning the 2021 business plan, the directors of Recreation and Culture and. Economic and Creative Economy Departments or their designates be authorized to submit an application for the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative. For an improvement grant to transform the Georgian Theater to create a safer and more vibrant space. With the improved mobility options and or digital solutions. And secondly, that if the grant is successful, staff report back to general committee. Regarding the operating cost implications and prior to the execution of any agreements. And I'm happy to speak to that.
Okay, go ahead. Well, sorry, no, I should read it again as it's motion without notice. So with regards to the Canada Healthy Communities Initiatives, it's moved by yourself, seconded by myself. That one notwithstanding motion 21G 06 concerning the 2021 business plan, the directors of RAC and Culture and Economic and Creative Economy Departments. Or their designates be authorized to submit an application for the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative for an improvement grant to transform the Georgian Theater. To create a safer and more vibrant space with improved mobility options and or digital solutions. That if the grant is successful, staff report back to general committee regarding the operating cost implications and prior to the execution of any agreements. Go ahead, Counsel Reepma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm always very reluctant to bring a forward emotion to council without any notice. And I hope that you can forgive me this time. We have become aware that funding is available from the federal government. For they have a pot of $31 million that's called the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative. And this is a fund that targets specifically new ways to adapt spaces and services. To respond to immediate and ongoing needs and to create safe and vibrant public spaces indoor and outdoor to encourage cultural activities. The reason for bringing it up here on short notice is that the deadline to apply for this funding. Is March the ninth, which is only eight days away. And the intent is to see if we can get some funding to apply to the Georgian Theater. In order to support our arts community that uses that theater. Now, I know that some of you may be asking, didn't we just agree to pull out of our lease for the theater? And we did. As part of our budget, but it has been proven difficult. If not impossible to find suitable venues for some of the users that have used the theater in the past. If we can get these funds from the federal government to patch up the theater. It may continue to service reasonably well and economically until we build the Fisher. So I'm looking for your support so that staff can make an application to see what kind of money is available, how much we can get. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Reepma, Counselor Congal.
Thank you, worship through you to Counsel Reepma and yourself as a seconder. Thank you for bringing this forward. And thank you for helping to make sure that we didn't miss a grant opportunity, knowing that it is a tight turnaround. So. Very, very happy to see this go forward. My question is. My understanding that grant funds provided need to be spent this year. So for those watching, my assumption is that these changes or improvements to Georgian Theater. Would occur in 2021. Is that correct?
That's the intention that we would in fact do that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the, sorry, just further to that, Counsel Congal, I mean. It's likely that with COVID, we're unlikely to see audiences in a theater before the end of the year, might maybe by the end of the year, but that gives some time. To do the work. And so it's a good thing that they want the money spent quickly, in my opinion. And the decisions apparently are going to be made extremely quickly as well. So this one was super time sensitive.
Great to hear. And I have a follow up question. I'm not sure if it requires an amendment, but I would like to see that there's some notification. I think you framed it, Counsel Reepma, that if the grant is. Successful, I'm hoping we can even be informed if it's not successful, if that warrants us coming back to the table to have a conversation about how to support. Our arts community while we have identified that solutions in the interim. Might not meet the needs around the type of theater and performances. So I would. Hope that this would also trigger a conversation about what are the other interim opportunities that we are exploring? In a timely way to make sure that we have some capacity when they're ready to receive an audience.
Fair point, Counsel Congal. The motion doesn't speak to. If it's, if it isn't successful, but I think staff are hearing you and I think they would need to notify us of that outcome anyway. So I guess the request I would have, I'm not sure it needs an amendment, but when staff report back to us. If, if they're not successful and we're not getting a staff report, we'd probably get a memo and we could then action the memo for alternate. Solutions because I certainly agree with you. Finding an interim solution, I think we've heard loud and clear. From the, the arts and cultural communities. That we need better interim solutions than perhaps some of the ideas that were floated when we decided to exit the lease at Georgian. So I mean, unless you could, you can certainly move an amendment to ask staff to come back if it's not successful, but. I would think either way, we're going to hear about it and hopefully very quickly.
And then I have a final question through your worship to staff. Are we pausing any efforts to find an interim solution and are banking on this as the first step? Or is there a parallel effort? Happening right now with our facilities and culture and rec with the performing arts community. I'm hoping we're still exploring a backup option if this is the best. And I'm not sure when we're going to hear about the grant money. So I am hoping there's still. Conversations underway.
I'll go to CAO Press or Ms. McAlpine, I guess, could answer that in terms of the engagement on a, on alternate venues for our users at Georgian.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman and, and through you to Counselor Congal. Certainly. The timeline for this grant is fairly quick and hopefully there will be a very quick decision. Staff are continuing to look at opportunities for interim solutions. And staff had initiated some work and discussions with the various user groups. About their needs and what might provide for better solutions. That was paused for a little bit, but we do have meetings set up every other week with the theater. Group users and part of the intention of that meeting is, is to discuss opportunities that might exist. With current city facilities or other facilities within the community. And what additional support might be required to make them more suitable.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Calpine.
Thanks, Counsel Congal. Counselor McCann.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. And I just have a quick couple of questions here. I totally supportive of this and I do believe that. There is a need that we need to fill in the arts community. Now, I can't remember last week's or two weeks ago's. Meeting. What is the, what is the construction cost to refurbish Georgian College Theater?
Ms. McAlpine.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. Through you to Counselor McCann. Staff have estimated that over the next four to five years, $1.3 million would be required. For the Georgian Theater.
And is through you, Mayor Lehman, please. Ms. McAlpine, is this group asking for 1.3 million or what are they, what is their ask?
Counselor McCann, this is a grant opportunity that the city would be applying for. So it isn't a group making a request. It would be the city putting forward a request for funding. To complete some of the most urgent renovations to the Georgian Theater.
So we don't actually have a number that you're asking for? Or is it, is it open, is it open and constant and the government? Tells you how many that you're going to give you.
Mayor Lehman through you to Counselor McCann. My understanding is this particular grant has a cap. That generally runs from 100 to $250,000 for each allotment. So. If the city was successful in a grant, we would frame the work that. Would be done based on that dollar amount. So. What we would be proposing as part of the application is to complete the most urgent work. Through that grant. And if we're, if it's acceptable. Then through the grant committee, then we would proceed with some of the items that had been deemed most urgent. They may not be sufficient and certainly 250,000 isn't sufficient to do all the work. But there may be some very substantive changes that could be helpful to the user groups that could be made.
And through Mayor Lehman, and am I guessing that the money that we may or may not get from the government, which is between 100 and 200,000 dollars. Will that actually get seats in the, people in the seats and performers on stage? If the initial renovation that's needed to make a safe environment for the playwrights?
Mayor Lehman through you to Counselor McCann. Certainly it would be our intent to put forward. Renovations that would be most effective for the user groups to. Ensure that they can continue to provide. Art and culture to the community. That again, the funds are not, that we're aware of are not sufficient to do all the work that had been identified for a four to five year window. But they would likely be sufficient to address some of the most urgent needs in terms of capital works.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. McAlpine and Mr. Sorry, Mayor Lehman. I'm guessing some head and see because you probably think maybe I'm going to be talking more being fiscally responsible. I, I'm actually very supportive of this. I believe that we do need arts. I believe that we do need to have. This outlet for people that are directly involved and for the community as a whole. And I just want to set this project up for success and not failure and not come back and say, we need X amount of dollars, but we raised this many dollars. So I just wanted to be clear here. I'm very supportive of getting the arts community back up on their feet and start enjoying some shows once this pandemics passed. So. I'm just wondering if would a recorded vote help with the cause, Mayor Lehman? To show that this is a council would be supportive of this to help with the grant money. And I just do believe that there should, there's going to be an expectation of an ask. And right now, without knowing any information, I'm not totally opposed to that because I do believe that the arts is needed and I do believe that this is going to be a good. Project to stimulate lots of growth in the city.
So the, the grant application doesn't require council motion. I think staff brought urged Counsel Reepma and myself to, to bring this motion. Because they didn't want to spend a staff time without council support on it. And also because technically it's contrary to a previous decision we made. Which is not to spend any more money on the Georgian Theater. So. I don't think it ever hurts to have everybody in favor, but whether you all raise your cards or redo it recorded. I think the grant application can be written with the unanimous vote. In the words, and if it's not unanimous, then they won't say it.
And maybe this, maybe this is the last question I have. Has Georgian College been approached? Are they willing to, to help with the funding at all for this project?
Yeah, so I had a chat with, with Mary Lynn West Moines about this. And I think we should have some clarity here. The 1.3 million dollars is certainly not work. And I think this is what you're asking, Counsel McCann. Georgian Theater is not condemned or unusable. That is the work that was identified by city staff to bring it up to a certain standard for continued use. I think the thought now is can we get a few more years out of the facility and buy us. Some time to design the kind of facility that would be the next generation of a performing arts facility in our community. And I think Counsel Reepma referred to that. So it, I don't think. You know, subject to staff correcting me, but I don't think 1.3 million is required to bring the facility up to code or anything like that. There, there would be choices made depending on how much money is out there and how much we, we receive. And with regards to Georgian College spending money on it, no, I don't think you should expect that the college is willing to contribute to capital, although we can. contribute to capital, although we can go back and ask. The the president did indicate to me that they're very supportive of our continued use of it. They would like to see that and can probably assist with some of the the challenges around operations there. So should we get a grant, should council decide we want to accept that funding and proceed with reopening the theater for a short period of time, probably 2022 to say 2024, 25, get three or four more years out of it, then I think there would be a conversation with Georgian around that. But I don't want to in any way misrepresent the college. You, you know, I don't think they have been asked or voted on any kind of commitment to this yet. I think what's, oh, something else that I would mention to you, Counselor McCann, and it's relevant to everyone. I really have to give credit where it's due. This didn't come from Counselor Ripma or myself. We had an interested member of the community, Angela Baldwin, who I think is known to many of you, a pillar of our arts community. She's chaired the board of a couple of the groups, theater groups and the Barry Film Festival. She caught this and brought it to to me late last week. So all credit to her and to our staff who then talked to her about it literally the same day and and put this and we put this together over the weekend. So that's where it's coming from and why you hadn't heard about it. Next, I have Counselor Morales.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Morales. I'm agreeing with Counselor McCann again. I'm actually concerned. Would I agree with him on this issue, this question? That was just a joke. What I agree about this is the following. I'm all for applying for funds, right? Anybody who's watched this council. I'm consistent. I'm always happy taking other levels of governments' money, repatriating it back to very taxpayers essentially. The, I guess I do have a question for Counselor Ripma, maybe. And then if, I don't know if any, if you can't answer yourself, Mayor Lehman or staff. We're essentially just giving a thumbs up to this application, right? We're not. Is there a reason why Georgian isn't doing this directly or they are doing it with another group and we're just giving the thumbs up? I'm just wondering. Yeah, I was just kind of curious on that one.
I know, I don't think Georgian is applying separately. I'm not sure your question, Counselor Morales.
Are we applying for the money?
Yes.
Is there a reason Georgian College is not applying for money to possibly retrofit their own capital asset instead of the city of Barry, which is a paid user?
Is there a reason? No, we could ask them if they could mobilize quickly enough, but I think the, because the purpose is to solve the interim space issue for the city and it's really only designed for our three or four year tenancy, maybe five year tenancy. Makes sense for the city to take the lead on the application from my point of view.
That's fair. That's, that's, that's a great answer. I guess what I share with Counselor McCann sentiments and maybe I'll put my own light on this is I I support this, but let's be careful. Let's just be aware that, let's say we get a million. I just want to use a nice round even number that it doesn't become one of those here, you have a million, but it's going to cost three, four, five, and the project won't die, won't go through unless the city ponies up more of property taxpayer dollars to do this. And therefore that million is used as leverage. And what I mean by that is that's, that's just, I think that speaks for itself. Careful that you don't take the free sample and it commits you to the to the subscription. But also the fact that a lot of colleges and and universities are going to be reassessing their capital, like cap buildings. Universities, especially in the U.S. and Canada, they all overbuilt. They they built a lot. They built shiny. They need to attract tuition dollars, especially international students. So they're just going to be reassessing. It's not a Georgian thing. This is an industry thing. So what I mean by that is a lot of them are going to cut where they're going to cut. And I wouldn't blame them if I was on on their board, I'd be going to local municipalities and squeezing every single penny that I could from them. So since we have our city council, councillor hats on, let's be careful that, again, we don't take the sample and end up having to fork over more and essentially be looking after capital assets that belong to the college. Even though the comment was just said that really we're the primary user and I say this in a positive way again, especially if we end up having to commit more money. I love the partnership with the college, but I know that I know that we've struggled for them to to give some money to adding law, property standards enforcements in Ward one. And we're talking just a margin of 30, 60,000 dollars in that one. So I'm all about partnerships. And maybe this can be a good negotiation tool of goodwill. Because I, again, I wear my city councillor hat on and I I need to make sure that that doesn't get accidentally overextended. So just let's just be aware if we do get money, the implication it might have moving forward with somebody else's capital assets.
Okay, thanks for that, Counselor Morales. Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Okay, if not, I will call the question. All those in favor, please indicate. That makes it unanimous. Thank you very much. Thanks, Members of Council. And again, a big thank you to Ms. Baldwin for bringing this to the attention of the city. And otherwise, we would, we would, we would not have had that chance, the opportunity. Okay, I think that completes direct motions and it brings us to inquiries of staff, Deputy Mayor Ward. Members of council, any inquiries of staff? Seeing none, announcements, members of council, Counselor Jim Harris.
Yeah, I have one quick one in the theme of the arts tonight and in mention of the McLaren. I want folks to know that art in the lockdown is a pop up style auction. It's happening right now. A great opportunity to get yourself a piece of art or maybe a fun experience and also support the McLaren and a local artist. So please visit McLarenart.com and look in the events section and you will find the art in a lockdown pop up silent auction. And be quick because it ends on March 5th. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. Counselor Congle.
Thank you, Worship. And forgive me, I'm going to read this, but I do have an announcement on behalf of a bursary that has been released through the Women in Construction. And forgive me if anyone else had this. It's been brought forward and it's starting to circulate. I'm seeing it on the Barry Families Unite. I'm seeing it through the Women's Advocacy Council and others. So for those watching this evening, if you know a female high school student that's graduating this year and pursuing a career in the skilled trades, Berry Construction Association's Women in Construction Group is pleased to offer an annual bursary to female students entering into post-secondary education in the 2122 year with a focus of entering into the trades. Those interested in applying can send an email to womeninconstructionberry@gmail.com. Please include a short essay, career path chosen, and why you feel women in the trades is important. So the submission deadline is April 23rd. Selected recipients will be notified in May and I guess I'll pass this along to city staff and see if it's something we can promote through communications to make it accessible. But I will, I'll post it on social media. And again, I think it's living there on Barry Families Unite. And I have one other announcement. So I think it was this, this tomorrow would have been the date that I had the good fortune of joining you as a councillor. So I wanted to say thank you. This has been a very unique year. I'm not sure. But by all accounts, every single one of you has been very generous with your time and your support. And on that note, I'm going to be working with other women and men across the city. And in addition to looking at how we start to get ready for the next municipal election. And so we're coming up to a week tomorrow, or sorry, week Monday, where it's International Women's Day. It's a great time to also think about asking her. So reaching out all of us to women that we think might be interested in getting involved or even joining committees. So hoping we see more diverse cross section of women adding their voice to decision-making tables, to informing policy, to bring things they care about to council. So on that, my last piece is I wanted to recognize as we're coming up a week to International Women's Day, a couple of women in Ward three. And so while I won't name you all, I did want to do a shout out because in particular, we're seeing some great things happening to those supporting businesses and running businesses. Dana at the locker room, Lynn at Marty's, others across the ward. You've been inspirational. You have been an amazing support. Thank you. And to two other women that I would have been campaigning with this time last year. Can you sorry, who's joined Rotary and is now doing some stellar work with Redwood. Women are showing up in Ward three in great ways to Kelly Patterson McGrath, who's just been announced to our Sustainability and Active Transportation Committee and who's part of the Berry Urban Gardeners Initiative that started around this time last year. And that has led to being a nomination for the mayor's award for community impact. So wanted to take a moment for all those much broader than Ward three. But as we come up to International Women's Day, taking a moment to celebrate those and hopefully passing, passing it along.
All right. Thank you very much, Counselor Congle. Counselor, I think I had, I saw Gary Harvey. Did you indicate? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Harvey.
Thank you, Worship. Just wanted to remind residents that we're within the notification area and obviously anyone else that's out there listening that this Wednesday at 7:00 P. M. We have a neighborhood meeting for an upcoming application at 729 and 733 Essa Road, which is a five-story building containing up to 46 units that is located on Essa Road, just south of Mapleview, literally right beside the Ultramar gas station there. So that's this Wednesday at at 7:00 P. M. All the information is on the Ward seven developments page. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Harvey. Counselor McCann.
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. This is going to be a unique conversation. It does concern you, Mayor Lehman, and the rest of the council can, considering businesses and us being in gray and there's a great demand from our business community. Not asking, demanding that we go into red because of the facts. And there was a lot of confusion today. I've had many discussions with all levels of government. I've had many discussions with other, with many businesses and they've haven't asked me, they've demanded that I ask some questions of you. So I'm just going to ask if this is a forum to ask you to get some clarification because we need, we all said we need to stop wasting time and help our businesses. Well, I want to know what we're going to do. I'm done with the lip service. I think we need to do some action. So are you ready for this?
Well, Counselor McCann, just a couple of things. You were speaking on to other levels of government on behalf of Barry City Council?
I was speaking, I, okay, you're trying to get tactical on me, Mayor Lehman. I was talking to other levels of government, yes, about this issue.
Okay. You know, we are at announcements. This is a point generally where members of council make announcements about matters of community concern. If you wanted to have a conversation around what are we doing about the business restrictions, it would have been great to to give me a buzz or and we could have talked about how we could do that tonight. A little awkward to do that now during announcements, Counselor McCann, but I was going to say something about this too. So why don't you go ahead and and say your piece? And if you have some questions that you want to raise, go ahead and raise them. But we don't do back and forth, you know, Q and A during announcements on something like this. So why don't you go ahead, say your piece, raise the issues you want to raise and maybe I can address them as I was going to speak to this matter as well.
Well, thank you, Mayor Lehman. These are unprecedented times. So I think we need to do whatever we can to to support our business community. I guess the first thing I'm going to talk about is Doug Downey's letter that he put out. I'm not sure why we're all conversing on social media these days together, but I guess that's the forum. And his letter that starts out is, let me read it. Barry, Ontario, like many, we are disappointed to see the Simcoe Muskoka shift into gray zone on the recommendation of Simcoe Muskoka Chief Medical Officer in Health and the support of Mayor Barry, the mayor of Barry. It has come as a surprise for our community over the weekend. And so I guess the the controversy between our provincial governments and this municipal government is that we put a statement out, which I believe a week and a half ago, and I believe again on Friday, that we were supportive of the lockdown. And that we, well, let's read the quote here. Chris Simon from from Simcoe Today asked on Friday, February 19th, did Simcoe Muskoka see red zone too soon? Mayor Barry Lehman, short answer is yes, we need to still be in lockdown. Quote from Mayor Lehman, let's not have a third wave, he said, echoing the recent sentiments of Lake Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, Medical Officer of Health, Officer of Health, Dr. Charles Gardner. I always take Gardner's opinion at most informed of local situation. He's the one who sees the vibrant, the short, the daily count on the impact of the measures. So yes, in the short answer, I'm hoping this is reopening isn't too early and that we're able to sustain in terms of opening up the economy earlier. So this has had a ripple effect within our business community because it's just confusing, right? And I am supportive of you, Mayor Lehman. You put out a post Sunday night or Sunday, right? I'm with you. I'm not against you here. I want to put as much pressure as we can on our province to open up. You know, the citizens of Barry, the businesses of Barry, we don't, we don't work to live, right? We actually live, we don't, we don't live to work. We work to live, right? We have a different community here and with the data that's put forward, we should be in the red zone. So I guess I just want some time to to clarify and I want to take some action tomorrow with our province with, with, hopefully with you. I know Counselor Elwin, I know Counselor Ripma, we're, we're talking quite deliberately that they want to make some action to help our businesses. And this is a, I believe this is an area where we can have a super big impact by putting pressure on our province. Thank you, Mayor Lehman.
Well, I'd like to say thanks, Counselor McCann, but I mean, helping the issue doesn't mean trying to bring forward some statement to show I've been contradictory or something. I'm not sure how trying to do that at the end of a council meeting is in any way helping the situation. I don't think you should try and position what you just said and the questions you just asked as somehow helping the situation. That was very clearly about what I said in a media report and something that I guess you think I've been contradictory on. And I'll certainly, I'll certainly address that, but we're not going back and forth tonight. So I'll just, and are you done? You've made your announcement?
It wasn't announcement, Mayor Lehman. This is a question. We're all trying to rally behind our small businesses. They're starving. And there's a bigger issue than COVID-19 where there's some mental serious illness that is happening in our business community. So I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but I hope there wasn't words of condescension here towards what I'm saying. I am trying to do whatever I can to help the small businesses. I feel like my hands are handcuffed. Here's an opening right now with Charles Gardner admitted he was wrong. He's, he's our specialist, right? And we can actually take this opportunity to put some pressure and say, it's okay, we made some mistakes, but let's fix them fast. And you're the strongest voice that we have on council. You're the mayor, right? And I'm, don't appreciate this condescension that you have in your tone here because I'm trying to help. I thought my post yesterday supporting you was very supportive. You know, Mayor Lehman, you gave Sergeant Counselor Morales some attitude about two, three weeks ago for doing exactly what you're doing right now. Like, let's just get serious. Are we here to help our small businesses or not?
Are you finished your announcement, Counselor McCann? Because then I'm, then I'm going to have the floor. Okay. So first of all, councilor's fighting does zero to help. Two, trying to point out an inconsistency in my statement, and I will address that in a moment, doesn't do anything to help. If you want to help, then let's design investments in our community that will promote business, that will promote a strong economic recovery. On this issue itself, let's all 11 of us call on the province to change business restrictions to allow nonessential businesses, small businesses to stay open. Now, I moved faster than that because the issue blew up on the weekend by, and I chose to send an email on Sunday. I could have waited for today and brought a motion without notice, or could you? Or any member of this council? But during a municipal state of emergency, the head of council speaks for council and has the responsibility for speaking for the community. And so that's what I did to the tune of 2,300 shares of that letter on Facebook. And the point around that is that there was a tremendous interest in the community. And I believe that pressure has been at least heard. Will the province act? I don't know. But let me get to the statement that you're referencing and I I guess was attempting to make me look bad for being inconsistent. So I absolutely think we should have stayed in lockdown for another week. I'll stand by everything I have said so far and all the comments. And I actually said that in national media, not just in local media. I think if we'd stayed in lockdown for another week, then there wouldn't have been this question around going back into lockdown now. What happened was we came out, there was a spike in cases and Dr. Gardner did his job, which was to put public health ahead of all other considerations and recommend to the province that we close down again. Now, a lot of people have second guessed. Now, a lot of people have second guessed the data and the motivations behind that. But I can tell you that, you know, I, I stand behind everything that I have said to this point. And I also stand by the fact that in my letter yesterday, I said it was appropriate. I actually said that the gray restrictions, including the lowering the capacity of big box stores, were appropriate. I don't question that because I think there are several elements of the gray framework that are appropriate. What I really have a problem with is that in those restrictions and by deciding at Fri, on Friday at 5 o'clock, there was not enough notice given to the business community. And the restrictions unfortunately still capture a whole bunch of supposedly nonessential businesses. And man, I'll tell you, on Friday night and Saturday, I heard from people who have thrown everything they had into their business over the last year and done it all right. Not anti-maskers, not people who are COVID deniers. People who have done everything right and just want to be able to operate safely. And, and they are, this is different this time. They are very, very unhappy that they've been pushed back into lockdown. And that has happened, in my opinion, because we came out, they had 10 or 12 days or however long we had, and then they had to go back in. That's what's been incredibly frustrating and, and damaging and difficult. And so, yes, I stand by what I've said so far. And I know there are people, including the author of the petition, who I've been going back and forth with constantly for three days, who don't agree with me. He thinks, he thinks I should have advocated, and I agree. You know, the chamber as well has said, maybe the best solution is red with additional restrictions through Section 22 that our MOH could put on. And that may well be the best solution. But here's why I advocated for what I did since you asked. It is entirely possible we're going to be in the color coded framework for three or four more months, right? So what happens if, God forbid, a month from now, case numbers do rise very quickly and we have to go back in again? Are we going to just, are we then going to have all those same businesses be told they have to close for a fourth time? The restrictions need to be changed because after a year, the small businesses have proven they can operate safely. And there is not one case, not one case of COVID that's been transmitted from a worker to a customer. These businesses know how to operate safely. And so what needs to change is the provincial restriction that says they can't open because. And the province did this before. They said small shops can open because we know you can open safely as well. And so if small retail selling potentially nonessential goods can open, then other small businesses like a photographer or a dance studio, and thanks to the very cold 10 young dancers who protested today out front of City Hall. These kinds of facilities that have tons of floor space per person can certainly operate safely as well. So yes, did I, did I believe that the lockdown, the measures, we shouldn't have come out at the same time? Yes, I continue to believe that because I believe we could have avoided this one. It didn't happen. We're into this one. And unfortunately, now we're faced with a situation where these businesses are forced to close under the framework. So I, you know, I stand by everything I've said at every point in this process, and I'm happy to be accountable for that. I believe that at this point, if members of council want to help, I would truly welcome that help. I, I believe that we have seen today other heads of council in Simcoe County speaking up about this. I believe there are, there's resolutions from the chamber and from others speaking up about this. And if we want to advocate, then, you know, bring a motion or join me in making the calls online. But I think, to be very, very clear, the, the request and the emergency brake that's been applied can be changed by the province on the advice of the health table. And I was in contact with our MPP all through the weekend. I was in contact with the, yes, really, as Council Morales, by text message in order to talk to him and understand. And I spoke on the phone with him. I spoke on the phone with Dr. Gardner. I didn't do any of this stuff without educating myself and understanding what the process was to make the decision and what the process would be to change the decision. And I did that because as your head of council, I wanted to act in a fair way towards other levels of government and try and present an informed opinion before I started pushing publicly. And so that's what I did. And I believe it's what's necessary in order to address the concerns of the business community. And I hope you'll join me in making the same call. So that's my announcement on that. Are there other members of council who have announcements? Counselor McCann? Sorry, Counselor McCann, you're still on.
Okay, switching gears. Who loves Berry? We got the I Love Berry contest. This is designed for elementary school kids, give them a real good opportunity where they can show their love for Berry. Maybe one day they'll write about how much they love the heart Berry. But this is put out by our executive team. That's city, the city's 2021 I Love Berry Contest is open to all Berry Elementary School students. We invite students from kindergarten to grade eight to express their love for our city by sharing a photo, a piece of artwork, or a short story. Entries will be judged originally, entries will be judged on originality, positivity, and expressiveness. Three winners will be chosen and the prize will include an I Love Berry prize pack. Winner's names shared on berry.ca and the Berry Advance. Winners will also have a chance to share their winning entries at a city council meeting and on Cool FM and Rock 95. The contest runs until Friday, February 5th. Visit berry.ca forward slash myberry for a link at the contest submission form. Thank you and thank you.
Counselor Thompson?
I probably already know the answer to this, Mayor Lehman. You will be speaking about the work staff did at the Holly. I'll leave it to you.
Thanks, Rob. Other announcements, members of council? Okay, oh, Counselor Congle, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. And on behalf, if I may, of Deputy Mayor Ward and Counselor Thompson, it sounds like we've got a joint town hall meeting date set for April 28th. And so the team's back again. It was a great time last time. And so wanted to make sure all of you from Wards 3, 4, and 5, hold the date, April 28th. It's going to be a great Wednesday night, 7 to 8:30, I believe. Communications will be forthcoming. And I believe we are reaching out and I do think we've got confirmation that we will be joined with a member of our police force and having conversations about community safety and wellbeing. So watch for information and happy to be back at the table with Mayor Lehman, Deputy Mayor Ward, and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. And I wanted to mention, we had a very good town hall in Ward 9. Counselor Morales and I tag teamed a lot of questions there. And it, with the speed round at the end, it wrapped up right on time. So Counselor Harris, that format we piloted in Ward 8 seemed to work really well in Ward 9. But thanks for the residents of Ward 9 as well. And Counselor Morales, I think that, that town hall went, was very well attended and great answers. With the four of us though, we're going to have to set aside a bit more time. And hopefully we'll beat Jim's attendance record because I know he reminds us of it every time we talk about town halls. Any other announcements, members of council?
Mayor Lehman, the real announcement in that one is that we finished something on time in Ward 9. Let, let that sink in for, let that sink in for a second. That was the real story.
It was, it was implicit, Counselor Morales, but you're right. Let's call it out. That was great. Okay, members of council, I do have a number of announcements. And I'll start with the one that Counselor Thompson alluded to because it was a very significant day on a number of fronts. On the same day that we moved into the gray framework, the mass vaccination clinics started vaccinating people. And I cannot say enough, I'll give credit to Dawn McAlpine, and I'll ask her to also mention all of the people that need to be mentioned because this is a really big deal. Around the province, community centers are being converted to mass vaccination centers. This is one of those historic things that's going on right now. The pictures of the place empty are compelling. They're going to be even more compelling in a few weeks than when they're full of people being protected. And we're getting closer to the end of COVID as a result. But Ms. McAlpine, I know, and CIO Prouse, congratulations to both of you and your teams. Dawn, who should we be recognizing for the work that was put in over the last week to get our community center ready to become a mass immunization clinic?
Thank you, Mayor Lehman. There are a number of staff who were involved. At East Bayfield Community Center, Paul McCarron, Jim Brown, Grant Dickey, Dominic Conte, Dylan Belavance, Brad Scharf, Corey Gordon, Jordan Trimestra, and Jason Buchanan. And they're helping with the East Bayfield Center as a supplies depot for all of Simcoe Muskoka. At Holly Community Center, we have Neil Ratter, Dave Thorne, Troy Parter, Mark Gray, Kevin Thornton, Andrew Beckero George, Jamie Corbett, Kevin Datema, and of course, Rob Bell are all involved in getting us up and running.
And I should also shout out, in addition to those people we just heard from on the facilities team and throughout the organization, rec and so on, Access Berry for their communications. They have been assisting the health unit all the way along and especially on this issue to help get the word out. I will reiterate for the public, one challenge we have had, which is people calling or in a few cases showing up to Holly, hoping to be booked or get booked for an immunization or, or be immunized. And unfortunately, no, because of the prioritization and the need for some order to this, you do need an appointment online. Unfortunately, the first tranche of appointments for the priority groups are all, are full for the first nine days. However, you get put on a waitlist and I should really push this information out. And please help me, members of council, with members of the community. When you get put on the waitlist, it says January 2, 2022. That does not mean that's the date you're going to get vaccinated. That's just what the system does. So the health unit really wanted me to push this out. You will get something that says January 2, 2022. That is not the case. What it means is you're on the waitlist and they need a date to hold in the system. Everybody on the waitlist in order will be assigned a date in the coming weeks. So it's worth it to be put on the waitlist is what I'm saying. And don't be afraid that that means you're, you're stuck till January. And I do especially as well want to put a shout out to the health units vaccination team. There were not, in fact, it was only a small subset of the public health units around the province that went ahead with their own online booking platforms in advance of the provincial one. Ours was one, Wellington Guelph is another. Guelph has already got two thirds of their over 80s vaccinated in their community. They're really doing amazing work. We hope to be not too far behind. But that is because the health unit took the initiative. So thank you. It's a huge team there that worked with our staff to set up the facilities and get the bookings going. I think I already talked enough about the, the business restrictions in that issue. The, the other thing I think I wanted to mention though around this because of what we did have on our agenda tonight. And I think Counselor Thompson and a few others made the point, you know, the way city council works, you know, there'll be deputations, there'll be items that we talk about, and the perception that can be left from the public is those are the only things we're focusing on and people can question our priorities. Also on tonight's agenda, but we didn't talk about it, but we approved was continuing the digital Main Street program, which is an essential support program for small businesses and building their capacity. We passed the use of the facilities for the COVID immunization clinic. So it's a good thing we blessed it tonight because we started using them today, but that started several weeks ago. Those are just COVID related items. We also blessed a servicing plan for new lands in the Southwest that will ultimately create hundreds of construction jobs and service thousands of new units. And part of that plan is the funding formula to service our industrial lands downstream. That's a very significant item. We didn't talk about it tonight. But I really wanted to raise this because that was on council's agenda tonight. Just because we don't talk about it doesn't mean these huge things aren't getting done for our community. Also, I'll just mention again Coral Living's project in terms of affordable housing, which as the market gets hotter and rents go higher, these kinds of projects are just that much more important in our community. So all of that was blessed amid the alphabet soup of committee reports tonight. But I don't want it to get lost or perhaps the impression that the items we talked about tonight were all of what was on tonight's agenda. I wanted to note, we're proclaiming, excuse me, March 2021 as it starts month in recognition of the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination and to promote inclusion, acceptance, and equity in Berry. I wanted to note that the city is offering a number of new ways to stay active from the comfort of home. We have a new virtual, let me try that again, virtual fitness pass. Pass holders will get unlimited access to all virtual class offerings like yoga, Zumba, bootcamp, and high intensity interval training, HIIT. For further information or to learn about the virtual fitness class pass for these classes, it's berry.ca/virtualrec. And again, the information related to the COVID vaccination clinics is on the health units website, simcoe-muskoka.org. Also, a couple of reminders, beginning today, you can pay for your parking on an app. The hotspot app, which we talked about last week, launched today. You can download it for free from the App Store or Google Play. It can be used in all municipal paid parking spots. And for those who are out in the community for, I'm sure, essential purposes, you may have noticed the signs, the hotspot signs went up around the city over the past couple of weeks. So the app is ready to be used today, berry.ca/parking. Counselor McCann mentioned the I Love Berry contest, which runs until March 5th. The city's Community Improvement Plan has also opened for applications. Those will close on May 15th. We offer financial incentives for eligible projects. There are three grant programs. Redevelopment Grant, Preservation of Built Heritage, and the Affordable Housing Development Grant Program. For more information and to apply, click on Financial Incentives/Community Improvement Plan on the planning area of our website. We're also looking for residents to share in their vision for the future Berry Transit. That's through buildingberry.ca/transitvision. And although I probably needed to say it yesterday, but don't need to say it today. We can still get a lot of snow, so the on-street parking restrictions last until the end of March, not the start of March. We did get a couple of questions today. Didn't council change it to March 1? Nope. They run until March 31st. We'll hope we don't need them too much. March is looking like it might warm up soon. But just a reminder, please don't park on the streets overnight in March. Deputy Mayor Ward, the bylaws, please.
Look by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we be granted to introduce the following bills. And these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bills 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Thank you. It is moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we be granted to introduce the following bills. And these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bills 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. Comments or questions? Seeing none. Those in favor of the bylaws? Any opposed? That carries. Deputy Mayor Ward?
Look by myself, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we be granted to introduce the following bill. And this bill be read a first, second, third time this day and finally passed, Bill 21.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Ward, seconded by Counselor Thompson, that we be granted to introduce the following bill. And this bill will be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 21. Comments or questions? Seeing none. Those in favor? Any opposed? None. That carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn? From Counselor Natalie Harris, seconded by Counselor Rob Thompson, we are adjourned and we will see you tomorrow night for City Building Committee and next Monday night for General Committee. Thanks, everyone. Good night.